A watershed, but it's not under their control. So that's. That's really nice. Um, the biosolids. Area is. Is six hundred fifty-six. Acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. East there that's isolated. That's a little. Piece of land there. And then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the northwest, the um, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six. Acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Right there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Miles of. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Part of the land there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Part of the land there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Part of the land there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Part of the land there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Part of the land there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment. Uh, we're east there that's isolated. That's a little. Part of the land there and then the Lake Tahuya property is clear to the north. West, the uh, upper left side of the map there. Six hundred fifty-six acres. Anderson Creek watershed is the piece to the south. The watershed assessment.
Recording in progress.
We did find streams with ESA listed fish species. This map was just a screenshot of. Of the stream network and then you can see there are a few that are indicative of a steelhead and a couple of other fish species. That are listed and potentially using those. Um, and then species of Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife concern. So no surprises here, but we did find some potential habitat for listed species, at least in the, in the. Uh, map exercise.
Results here. Uh, this was. As a quick summary of. Of uh, I think the burning question of how much merchantable timber is out there. This, this is one critical thing we could report or one key. Uh, aspect of the inventory. I, I personally use inventories a lot for the younger stands. I kind of know that where the merchantable timber is. What I'm often. Interested in is the, uh, the, the younger stands for silviculture planting and. You know, where there's. Uh, denser areas of trees maybe need to be thinned or maybe areas are understocked or that kind of thing. So. Inventory is not just about the merchantable volume, but. It's very important for determining the sustainable harvest calculation. So what we found here. On, we're defining it as merchantable timber greater than thirty-five years old. Uh, it's pretty even split between what's in the Union Basin and other lands. Um. Of course, per acre, uh, there's more. In the Union River Basin than, than outside, but the total is a hundred and sixteen point one million feet. Of available merchantable timber on City of Bremerton property.
Alright, we're gonna Q and A at the end. So take notes and we'll circle back again.
Okay, we did a, a forced inventory, which is very important for planning. Um, there's a lot of pressure on inventories for. Uh, harvest decisions and. Like I say, silviculture and, and just knowing where, where things are at, uh, on the property. So we cruised, um, most all the merchantable. Stands out there. Um, eighty were cruised. A couple of pre-merchantable stands got plots in them. Uh, but a total of about thirty-one hundred acres. Of the property was directly cruised. And what didn't get direct plots on it was either expanded into by copying, uh. Data from cruise stands into si- into similar. Timber types or was populated, uh, for the very young stands. Using existing planting information or just from visiting, uh, those. Those areas and, um. Uh, putting together estimates that would go in and, and work well, um. That way versus actually putting the plots in. So. Uh, we collected data using fixed and variable radius spots, uh, fixed spots. I guess simply put is a, just a fixed area for younger trees where you would. You would measure like all the trees within a hundred acre plot or a fifty acre or whatever. Variable radius spots. Are done, uh, using instruments that project an angle and, and then. The, the tree size can determine, uh, what's, what's collected. And then we did a. Pretty extensive, uh, quality control, check crews. Across everything. There was two, two or three, uh, local cruisers that we used, um, from the Bremerton area. So that was a good. Fit and their work checked out real well. So sustainable harvest level, uh, sustainability easily is defined as. Harvest equaling growth or harvest not exceeding growth. Uh, if you do that. Continuously, you'll always have a sustainable. Level of timber. And so we use fifty, fifty-nine hundred, almost six thousand acres were in play. We're making that calculation. Um, of commercial acres, thirty-six. Hundred of those acres are greater than thirty-five years old. So that's the direct amount acres that we used. Uh, for calculating, um, what was sustainable. That, that hundred and sixteen million board feet. You can see a distribution there in that graph of, um. Net commercial forest acres by age class across. Uh, the Bremerton property. Obviously, most of the timbers in that older age class. So the conclusions were. Uh, that they even flow sustainable harvest options per year over ten years' time. Um, if all, if you use all the acres, um, then. Then for a sixty-year rotation, meaning you essentially cut a sixtieth of the. The property or a sixtieth of the available commercial timber. Each year you could harvest three point two million feet annually. The lower, the lower the rotation age you set, the more. The more you can harvest sustainably. So if you define your rotation at forty years old, like an industrial company broad, well, then you can harvest even more. Sustainably. But three point two and three point eight million feet per year for sixty and fifty-year rotations. Respectively, if you use all the acres. Um, past research and, and policy has been to, to fix the amount of harvest. Minimize the amount of harvest in the actual watershed that, that actual basin at a half million feet here. So doing that and then taking the rest of the land and calculating, well, what, what is the, the land outside the? The basin. What is its sustainable level? Well, then it drops your, your harvest down. To one point eight and two point two million feet per year, um, based on that sixteen fifty-year rotation. So it's about a million feet less total. If you fix that harvest within the, the watershed itself. There's a little typo there. I know I've taken that out of. Presentations. It's back in the, the current annual increment, um, which was a good check on these calculations. That were done. And, um. Largely based on. Uh, area control and so on. It, it does check out that all these options, it, it, all the options there are well within. What, what the shown, um. Bremerton land is, is growing per acre per year. So that. Current annual increment, the volume and grown per acre. Per year is seven hundred and twenty-four board feet, not, not seven hundred and twenty-four thousand per year, per acre per year. That would be great, but. I'd say real fast, talking about all these board feeds, uh, numbers for folks that don't know, um. The board foot is a twelve inch by twelve inch and one inch thick board. Yeah, it takes about fifteen to twenty thousand board feet to build a home. Uh, and then your average log truck you see going down the road has got about forty-five hundred board feet on it. So about, about three, three loads of logs and you can build a house. So. Next slide.
Yeah, and Brent, I'll, I'll go ahead and take over from here. Um, so. Uh, this would probably be a good time. We talk questions or we can kind of talk about next steps for this project. I don't, I don't know. Does he change when you want to do questions now or?
Yeah, is that how it's formatted in your presentation?
Yeah, so the next slide are kind of the next steps for this.
Okay, uh, so we can take a break and do the questions then. Anna, go right ahead.
There's suspicion that I have questions. Um, so this is, uh. Basically, um, Mason Bruce has put together, um, a presentation on how much we can sustainably cut. Like. Has Kami Appleback weighed in on how much we can sustainably cut while maintaining the water quality, which is the reason the watershed forest exists?
Yes, yeah, Kami, Kami is part of this whole project and is included in, was receiving all these documents and. She understands the importance of being able to harvest to support the health of the forest with the concerns for water quality. So, and you know, she and I are on the same page that water quality is our number one priority and we say that in this document.
I, I have never run across any research showing that. Clearcutting and reforestation is including water quality.
Um, can we make sure that we have the definitions of those terms correct? Are we talking about clearcutting?
Yes. So. I'll, I'll go and, and say, so for this. Exercise is based upon using even age harvest, which has been referred to as clearcutting, but. What we've done in the past have been minimizing the size. I think, um, the numbers talk for themselves. You saw the majority of our forests is sixty plus. Um, and you'll see in the future documents kind of. How we can, you know, essentially talk about that we can protect water quality and also sustainably harvest the forest. And. We've done it historically. We, we haven't had any water quality issues and harvest has occurred on city property involving clearcutting, but it's. Where we're following the rules and also we're going above and beyond to protect water quality. Never had any concerns.
Um, sorry, I'm trying not to be long-winded, so I'll just bite my tongue real quick. Um, you all remember from the Public Works tour, that stand of Scott, that beautiful vigorous stand of Scott's groom near the, um, the Ivy. Was it the Ivy place?
The UV.
The UV place, yeah. So here we are moving from, uh. Doing about twenty-five acres a year. Was that about right, what we've been doing in the past?
No, so in, Brent, I, I don't know if you want to jump in at all. So. For, for this exercise, it was solely based upon what could we do in terms of just upon. What could we sustainably do in terms of harvest? We're not necessarily saying we are doing this. This is just what we could possibly do. And then he listed what we've been doing previously, which has been about fifty to sixty acres of harvest through the whole ownership for the past couple of years.
Okay, and, and we've been given alternatives for significantly larger than that. I understand that there were, I, I don't know, like six thousand acres plus were, were cruised, three thousand eighty-nine acres were cruised. You know, basic cruising, um. DBH and all that jazz. But no cruising was done for established fish or wildlife presence. Now it's all done from paper.
So that, that was all from desk, um, that was strictly just from data collected by Fish and Wildlife. We've also been collaborating with the, the tribe on going out and. At least not for this project, but for other projects, making sure we know where there's salmon habitat so we can improve it on safe property and. Um, we have a great relationship with the Spanish tribe out there with the hatchery and the forest drainage.
Um. Trying to cut this, these questions down. Um, you had small areas of steep slopes were found. Were these associated with streams that is, you know, where they steeped ravines?
Who are you asking? Got it. Anybody?
Uh, so, uh, Brent. Stop me if I'm incorrect, but that was referred, so that was all based upon LiDAR, but I'll tell you based upon. My experience of being out there, it's, there's steep slopes just associated with the terrain. Um, there's just some areas where there's just. Some steeper faces. Um, they are above the reservoir, but they're, they're stable and, um, you'll see from the. Inventory that, that we haven't done any harvest up there. It is fairly steep and we're aware of the concerns.
Um. Final question. There's significant money available from the state of Washington for landowners. To not cut their forests and to. Keep the carbon in ground. Um, have, have you considered that as an alternate source of revenue?
Yeah, so that, that's actually a good transition. So the special topics, which are, um, Mason Bruce and Drew are prepared with these. Um, when if you could go to the next slide that lists all the special topics, they provided memos essentially saying. Look, we essentially looked at potentially generating revenue from carbon credits. And so they'll talk about that in terms of the feasibility of that and. Um, if it was, is a possibility of generating funds for the city. But, um, I'll tell you just from preliminary talks, our ownership and just the way that carbon markets have been going. It's not something that could be something easily accessible for us. Just because of the size of our ownership and just the amount of data collection it takes to qualify for carbon credit.
Okay.
Um, just one final.
And then Jeff, you're, you're next.
Yeah, um. Okay, uh, I would like, my, my final question is, I would like to be able to ask further questions down the line, but also FCS was the subcontractor makes and Bruce on this, were they not?
Uh, FCS.
FCS, okay. Um, and they were gonna do a cost benefit analysis?
Correct. So that, that's where we're going for the next step. It's looking at the financial analysis of the impact on the water rate that timber revenue has. And looking at these different sustainable options are. For essentially the impact it adds on the water.
So the cost benefit analysis is related to the water rate. Thank you.
All right, nothing. Thanks much, Tom, Brett for presenting this. So make sure I get the thirty thousand foot right, uh. Almost thirty years since we updated the utility and forest, forest line management plan. And so this, this document that's being summarized is the result of the RFP from early last year, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that, that's correct, yeah.
But can, can I just start just, so what, what we're presenting, what's being presented right now is like the background information, the inventory information. And, um, you know, the, the special topics and the rest of the amount spills off this. This is just. Kind of giving you a baseline of what exists right now and what's possible for maximum harvest, but there's, when you get into like harvest options. Um, they're digging into that in a big way. So there's gonna be more information coming on, on those issues.
Okay.
So this is just background.
Yeah. The, the, the resource assessment was essentially the first step to give us, because it's, it's been a while, we've gotten updated inventory. And then from these numbers they gave us in general, this is what you can do until it's sustainable. And the next. Those special topics include the sustainable timber harvest alternatives. And we'll discuss, you know, all the different options we have as a city to manage our lands. And the different options for essentially timber harvest.
Okay, and then those special topics are yet completed.
Those they're working on right now. So we have rough drafts and then we'll be coming back to council at another study session to discuss those.
Okay, thanks. That, that helps, that helps clarify. So all the. We were talking about the carbon, carbon sales, Jada Kitch Trail, security impact. That's all. Still to be finalized.
Yeah, yeah. And so if, if you go to the, essentially our schedule, so, um, we're engaging tonight with you guys at, um, council and then. The next step is we're, um, our advisory committee, which is the panel we talked about previously, adjacent landowners, experts, tribal member. Um, representative, um. They'll be looking at the special topics and providing comments. And then once we have that, we'll kind of be able to get, um. You know, a little bit more refined and come back to promptly engage on that. And then. Um, once we have the special topics a little bit more refined, then we go out to the public for public comment via an online. Um, forum similar to what the, um, like the transportation plan does where people can write comments. And then, um, coming back in early twenty twenty-five for adoption from council.
Okay, that makes, sorry, one more sentence. Perfect. So the, so the document that was kind of screenshot of, Brent, is that. Publicly acceptable with this inventory or is?
Uh, the, the resource assessment. So there, there's a little bit of editing that we need to do, but once we get that, that'll be publicly available.
Okay, yeah, perfect. The only other question I had was, uh, notice on the slide a need for a boundary survey. Didn't know on the timing of that. Is that a. Like a long-term, a survey should be done or is that short-term before this plan is finalized? Do a survey?
Uh, so, so that's, um, just referring to, as Brent mentioned, if we have any sort of activity in the area, we should have a property lines survey done. Make sure that there's no issues or if there's any sort of, um, new development going in. Working with the developer or just doing it ourselves, make sure that the boundaries are clear. Um, and that's kind of on a. We've kind of started doing that. The past couple of years, we've had a couple of contracts to get surveying done. And but this is just to continue to do that process so that, because most of these product lines have been surveyed since.
Councillors, any questions? Uh, Council Frey, do you have any questions?
Uh, my question is around age. Um, I've been hearing more and more about the value of old growth forests or whatever the term is that. We call them here. Uh, and, uh, wondering if that's gonna be addressed. I saw the age, you know. Sixty-six or whatever plus makes me feel my age when I see that. Um. And just, it perked my interest. Just, uh, you know, is any of our forests considered truly old growth? And, uh, uh, just wondering if that context or that, um, thinking is gonna be addressed, maybe in those special topics.
Yeah, um, so for, for old growth, I, I think all council members here are, might be aware of. You know, the, the Union Drainage burned almost completely in the thirties. It, it was completely gone and. You just look at the old clothes of the, the dam being corrupted, it bare dirt and they're, um, essentially working on a wasted landscape. So. In terms of, um, old growth, uh, Brent, I don't know if there's been a formal definition yet, but in, in my experience, it's been anything two hundred plus that's considered old growth. Um, it, you know, and, you know, that is the thing of concern for us is, you know. Sixty is a mature forest and growing older and, you know. That's kind of our, it's larger stems and. We're gonna start getting to a point where we cannot harvest because some of those aren't available. They just, they don't. Need to take logs like this and more. So that's just another consideration as well.
So we'll learn more about that as we go on as well, it sounds like. Okay, great. Thank you. And excuse me, you know, I haven't lived here for all that long, just ten years, but I have seen those fixers. I should have. Made that connection. So thanks, Sean.
I have a question. I mean, there were some, uh, questions about, uh, the data that was collected, um, for the wildlife, for the endangered species, that it was a data that was gathered for Fish and Wildlife. And what was the other source you said?
Oh, that, that was just working with, um, so we're, we're regulated by, uh, the forest practices. So we have to make sure that any stream that's considered fish, we have to have crossings that are capable to allow for fish passage. To have those forest roads out there. So when we go out to do, um, any sort of roadwork or that sort of thing, we make sure that we can get a typing done. And that gets stored in the database with the forest practices as we, it's called a water type modification form. It gets uploaded into their database and kind of. Stores that information.
So that is kind of boots on the ground surveying. At the time, you're just going back to that old data and, and the Fish and Wildlife data is. They're boots on the ground. They're doing that data. So there's, I mean, it, it feels, um. Oh, so.
Uh, so starting.
What did you, what did you say, Anna?
So someone did actually go out, um.
From Fish and Wildlife?
So, so the data, um, Wendy and, could you bring it up in, but she, she used the Fish and Wildlife. Kind of data that's talking about habitat that's possible for those kind of endangered species. So.
And so I was just asking specifically when the Fish and Wildlife collects that data. Do they, are they boots on the ground that are going out and surveying?
Yeah, yeah. So they'll, they'll go out in those spot check areas. Um, they'll, we, we've allowed them on the pass to go out and survey and that's probably where that data came from.
Okay.
And then a lot of our data is from the work that we do with Boots on Ground, working with the Department of Natural Resources to determine, um.
That's what it was. Department of Natural Resources. Um, and so I just wanted to just kind of, you know, it, it seems. Like that would be well in line to use data from. Other sources rather than contracting new data as the data that you use for Fish and Wildlife within the past ten years or five years. Do we have it?
It's pretty variable for them.
Okay, yeah.
Similar to their customs for, um, you know, wash that.
Oh, I heard Wendy. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna chime in real quickly on that. That. The WDFW, uh, database is the priority habitat database. And so they update that kind of ongoing. Some of the data are older and some are, are newer, just like Sean's saying, depending on. If and when they go out and do spot check surveys. The other data were from US Fish and Wildlife Service, which is. That's just pretty, pretty high level, but it's, it's their own mapping of where they believe endangered species, um, habitats occur outside of chronicle habitat.
Okay.
Just habitat.
So I guess, um, I guess I wanted to find out kind of a time point on how old the data is that you use. To, I mean, I, I would think if it was in the past five to ten years, it might be okay. But if it was fifteen, twenty years old, that, that might. Do you, do you know what I'm saying? Like how new is the data that was used to survey for possible endangered species?
Yeah, so the, uh, the PHS database has dates in it, so I can look at that. I know it's a huge range in time though.
Okay. All right, that, that's all my question. I, I would hope that it was newer data that was used and if it's not, within a certain time point, that there would be boots on the ground surveying it to. Um. I mean, piqued my interest with the monarchs and, you know, uh, and so, um, that's all that I'd like to find out about. It's just kind of a time point on. Maybe you can follow up with that later.
Sure.
Anna, round, round two?
Just one question. Um, you talked about the stakeholders at this point. Um, you talked about the stakeholders. Will there be stakeholders from DNR or WAFW or?
Yes, so the advisory committee has members from DNR and, um, WFW as well as DOH, Department of Health and, um. Trying to think of.
That's the one I was forgetting.
Yeah, yeah, the Department of Health. Um, and then also, um, two former council members that are, um. Considered, so considered ratepayers listed that are part of the advisory committee.
They, they, they have Bremerton water in their home. Can you tell us who they are?
I mean, if it's not.
Nick Wofford and.
Will Moppen.
Thank you.
I think Fish and Wildlife is somewhere too. Yeah, this is pretty extensive. There's kind of eight or something.
Yeah, there's individuals.
Eight, yeah, eight members.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I just wanted to double check. Are there any other lingering questions out there? Jeff, Denise, anybody? Okay. Um, thank you so much for your presentation. Um.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Walsh, yeah, Mr. Keller, Ms. Wendy, thank you very much for attending and, and putting this, this together for us. So more to be revealed. We'll see you guys again in early 2025, I guess, whatever. Well, well, maybe we'll see you or we'll see Mr. Walsh. I'm not quite sure. All right.
Thank you all very much.
We'll see you soon. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, let me check. We've got Lori Maine. Uh, I'm going to, from a panelist. And I just wonder, I bet, that Maine also will have, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Maine, you've been invited to be a panelist. There you are. Okay. Doesn't always show me this in real time. I'm going to make you a co-host just in case you have a presentation. Um, and at this time, um, I'm welcoming Ms. Maine of Westbrook, Maine LLC to present recommendations of the lodging tax advisory committee transition study. This is a ten-minute presentation, um, with, uh, additional time for Q and A. Um, all right, Ms. Maine, can we, are you there?
I am here.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Well, thank you for joining us. You have a presentation, correct?
I do, and you need to tell me if you're seeing it because I'm sharing.
See it, yes.
Isn't this exciting? I love this. So, um, thank you for the opportunity. Let's, um, I did, in the interest of wanting to, um, honor how many times you all have gone until eleven o'clock at night. I didn't want to participate in having that happen. I know you've had some pretty long study sessions. So I did plan on this, um, being more specific to really speaking to just the high levels and then getting into your questions if we can. Um, what, but I wanted to validate of the report that was sent out on the twenty-fifth of July, has everyone had the opportunity to review it? I will be referring to it quite often, and I just want to ensure if there are questions, I have it here in front of me. I'm happy to refer back to the report. But it was really from my professional perspective, it was an opportunity to speak to four key areas that we found as we were sitting and talking with various folks. Um, and then several recommendations that we'll make out of this. Uh, when initially asked to do this, we were asked to really establish, how are the LTAC funds doing? How are we doing with respect to what we're giving and what we're sharing with, et cetera? And, um, I'm mostly focused on those individual, uh, grants that are given to those organizations outside of the publicly held properties that the, the count that the city of Bremerton has. Um, and I really wanted to just kind of call out a few things when it comes to these four areas. They're mentioned in the executive summary. And the first is the ROI. I mean, obviously, return on investment is such a widely used, uh, term because investment, return, what type of return? What are we looking for? And being from the business world that I am, I honestly wanted to, to speak to the reality of what makes that LTAC dollar viable, which is heads and beds. I mean, you've all heard that terminology. Um, and it, it was difficult to verify the information. So as we, um, went through and studied some of the various forms that were handed back in, validating those forms, establishing that information was, um, difficult. And I don't mean in the sense that it was erroneous, it just wasn't verifiable. So we really do believe it's critical that whatever we do with these LTAC dollars, one of the key components needs to be verifiable data. We're in the twenty-first century. We have the opportunity these days to be able to obtain some of the data. Some of the organizations you do support have that data platform. It's mentioned in the, the report. But they don't have all of the various platform levels and permission levels. So there might be some recommendation, well, not might be, there is definitive recommendation on our part that we get information that seems more viable and more reviewable, if that makes sense. Um, operations and costs, we felt it was important to understand what the city staff do and how they oversee this process. Outside of the variety of meetings that, um, council chair Denise Frye oversees and the many wonderful individuals who give their time at these LTAC meetings. There's considerable oversight that takes place within the city. Um, in your report, you'll be able to see what we initially learned was the workflow, the departments that it included, the hour estimations that we came up with. And, and we believe that there is two options that you should consider. One is, um, revising a lot of what you presently ask of your individuals who are looking to participate in the LTAC grants. Um, to have it be more technical, have it be more online, having a lot more opportunity for individuals to validate what it is they want to ask for and verify if it's not, um, falling within the LTAC rules, that it can be immediately denied. Um, we've learned that there were many times where your wonderful team, uh, were calling back applicants and trying to give them information, et cetera. And while that's wonderful, I think it's also important that, that the, the focus of what LTAC is, is really on being able to contribute those dollars out to the community. But our recommendation, we think many of these steps that are required by LTAC could be outsourced. They could be looked to where, um, that organization or that individual or that department basically reports up to, uh, the overall requirements of the JLR. So that would be our executive summary number two. Um, number three is really the business plan. When, when we interviewed the variety of individuals that we, we did, we came up with the understanding that goals are somewhat opaque. And while everyone clearly knows we want to bring more people to Bremerton, how that will be assessed? Which way we'll go about it, how we market it, what's Bremerton's brand? They really did reveal themselves. Um, and again, you'll see in the recommendations are overview of why we think some of the ideas we proposed could solve that business plan. Um, and then lastly, it's infrastructure. Um, spoke great deal with the variety of organizations that bring and drive business to the marketplace. Um, particularly to the Kitsap Conference Center and to, um, working with Visit Kitsap. Both have learned that there are times that the city just doesn't have enough rooms to go after some of the organizations. Um, those of you who have attended city events or go to associations and regional events, there's something that's being re, um, required, if you will, if you attend a conference. And that is the hotel rooms have to be in the building that the conference is in or very, very close. And so there's sort of a restriction that happens. So we initially looked at what other options might be available. What are some other areas we could consider as investment and with respect to our infrastructure? And outside of the actual supporting of the actual Bremerton, um, brand and the Bremerton approach to going after tourists and use of those LTAC dollars, we think there might be some different markets that we could consider. So, um, we're going to basically make these recommendations specific to, I would say first to last and certainly not in importance, if that makes sense.
Yeah, Ms. Maine? Just for a minute, what we're seeing on your, on your presentation is, I believe, your Zoom slides. Uh, Mike Riley, is that kind of what happens on their end if there's those gray boxes? Can you pop your, the gray, uh, you see how there's a picture bar for Zoom on the, on your right-hand side of your screen? That one, yep. If you could minimize that or pull it down or something, you might be able, yeah, then we can see more of your plan.
Thank you for calling that out.
Look at, are you, are you able to drag it down? There we go. Perfect. The upper screen, I believe you can collapse as well.
Page twenty-five of the package.
Yeah, and so, I mean, for whoever's viewing.
Yeah.
All right, we're good. You're good to go.
Oh, you can see this? Yes.
Yeah, we can see it now. Yep.
Okay.
On the top.
Um, it, we can read it because it's developer tourism.
I can.
In the back.
Did that help?
Uh, do you have another gray box? There we go. There we go. Okay, this is great. You're welcome to proceed.
Thank you so much for that. Appreciate the input. But so back to my, my statement, none of these are like more important. I think what they are is relational. And so in chatting with a variety of folks that we did, you know, the, the realities are there needs to be one organization, whether it's within the city or without the city, that is really the Visit Bremerton. Someone who has the, um, focus on Bremerton, um, the understanding of what it means to assess various events and be able to look at that information in real time, validate any pivots that might need to be made and really kind of create, if you will, more of an action plan that's in, um, the hands of some organization. What really raised this issue is when we were able to reach out to some of the other cities, um, that other organizations. And one in particular, and it was copied into your, um, your packet, is Gig Harbor. Um, it was rather eye-opening that Gig Harbor is giving majority of the LTAC dollars over to the, uh, uh, existing organization, the Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce. And then obviously having some key milestones, key expectations, things that have to be driven from that that would then be within that tourism business plan. So i- in my view, that the, in the Visit Bremerton would be the one to develop the tourism business plan with obviously direction from the LTAC Committee and others that would be at the city. Or there could be an organization within the, uh, the city of Bremerton that takes this on. But one way or the other, I, I do feel that there's been such a approach to this that's been effective. And there's nothing that we found that was, um, egregious in regard to its returning value to the city of Bremerton. But it wasn't a very well-oiled machine of expectation of what each would do. And if it doesn't, then what do we pivot to? How are we going to make things working from that perspective? Um, so not only with the tourism development or tourism business plan is that important, certainly you need a promotion marketing plan. And that needs to fund the website and the social presence. One of the comments made in the actual report speaks to the fact that the website is currently residing on the city of Bremerton's website. And while it's lovely, I, I would say if the city of Bremerton wants to be more specific about what it is to come and share and be part of Bremerton, it might be something that we want to consider having its own individual website that stays updated, stays consistent, has all the various social platforms being, um, populated and continues to create that social buzz that we all frankly seem to live by these days. Um, that then leads us to an alternative tourism avenue. Because of the limits of guest rooms available in the downtown area for conferences, multi-day conferences, which really are what we're trying to do is bring hotel rooms into the vat, into the city so that that drives the LTAC fund. Um, we really think that there might be time for us to look at other potential marketplaces. One of the, um, consistent themes in talking with individuals was, um, the, the reality of, of spreading the love, if you will, much of what we focus on for good reason, who doesn't love that waterfront? Is in the waterfront area, in the downtown area. And many of the hoteliers I spoke to really were asking questions around, well, why can't we invest in something that would bring larger, like, I don't know, sports events or, or, or larger events that could, you know, people don't care where they stay as long as they're coming to an event. And that led us down another path to look and validate what happened with the Colesville area perk. But asking the bigger question, what's perk going to do? And if there were a way that we could take a peek at what they're going to do and augment, maybe even a little bit, not a lot, what it is that we want to do to pender guests there in Bremerton, there might be an opportunity to really take a step back and ask the big question. How large is this market? How large is the youth market for tourist, for, um, sports? And not to mention adult markets these days and really validate what we can create as a destination that would benefit many of the hoteliers, um, throughout the entire city of Bremerton. I would only recommend doing that, however, if you create a tourism promotion area. And the reason we would recommend the tourism promotion area, that's where you pay a small amount per night for every room that's occupied within the city, um, hotels and, and BRBOs and Airbnbs. And then that could be specifically replacing any funds that might come from LTAC. Because the, the tourism market that we're looking at with youth and travel sports is certainly a viable market to consider investing in with LTAC dollars. I just would hate to see us forego giving the dollars and continuing in the, uh, promotion tourism plan. And because I have seen many cities, primarily I mentioned them in the, that the, um, report, Wenatchee is one. Um, Walla Walla has a TPA. There's a lot of organizations that do this. And those dollars, of course, are managed by the city in terms of directing them to right locations. But the point is those dollars can be defined exactly what they're supposed to go to. So potentially those dollars could be used to fund a website, social presence and things of that nature. Um, sixth area is improve and develop a plan for directional signage. Again, through the interviews that we did, we learned apparently that that's in the public works process. Our only question was if there are outside resources that that are being considered. And I assume they are because you all are so wonderful at what you do. But let's just make sure that we talk to what it is that is the Bremerton brand, that we talk to what it is that really is future-proofing, what that signage would be, how to basically say welcome and make sure guests know, we want you here. Um, and, and address the realities of it's not just for now, but it's for fifteen, twenty years from now. Um, as mentioned, with respect to what the city, uh, staff are doing, we highly recommend that you outsource to an agency. Or our, our professional opinion is LTAC should be paying and reimbursing the city of Bremerton for what we purport is the fifteen K a year that they're spending in productivity and more than likely twice that. But then nonetheless, that's what we were able to, uh, validate. And then really revise the current process for LTAC as recommended by us in the workflow. So those are, because I wanted to try to keep this under ten minutes if I could, um, I wanted to talk to this issue really quickly and, um, allow for some questions at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maine.
You're welcome.
Councillors, questions? Yeah.
No, thank you. Thank you so much, Lori. Really enjoyed reading the whole presentation and, uh, sort of the whole, the whole, uh, review and document. Um, and there was so much good stuff in there. Uh, some automatic first on some questions. Okay, personally, I think that admin set aside makes sense. That's what we do for, you know, CDVG, which I think is even slightly less fun. So we have some pretty stressed in council staff and our contracts administrator. Um, so that makes to me. Um, and I also really like the idea of getting, getting an organization to focus on, on us because there are so many wonderful ones out there across the county. But I do feel like we're spread among several of them. We're just not like more focused of any, any particular, uh, for at least some of the really large ones. Uh, you mentioned an organization that had numbers that were kind of suspect on the number of hotel nights they, they reported. Did you get a chance to talk to them or find out where the discrepancy came from or, or any more information?
And it really wasn't a discrepancy. I think what it was is being fortunate enough to have worked in that marketplace. The, the realities are there was no actual data to support the why. So it, uh, you know, from, for my purposes, people could be coming from Tacoma. They could be coming from Bainbridge and coming to these locations. But what has to happen is the ability to have that be written in a report. Because when you look and recognize there's two hundred and some thousand room nights available annually in the city. And then we're reporting four hundred and some, you know, there's an idiot like, oh, whatever. What I professionally think is, is exactly that. People are driving over across the, the bridge. But in my view, that doesn't benefit the, you know, the flywheel we're looking for, which is the LTAC dollars for the city of Bremerton. So we really wanted to approach it from that perspective and just really call out verifiable information. Validating every event that it's over every month, you know, this is what we're doing. So you're getting some organization tracking in a more rigorous fashion than in a casual fashion.
That makes sense. And on that kind of follow-up, did you get a chance to see what percentage of hotel rooms are full and what areas? Like you mentioned, folks at Conference Center don't have enough hotel rooms nearby. Um, as far as did the number of rooms go, are we, are we full most of the year? Are we full weekends? Are we full seasonally?
It's kind of curious. Only because there's um, and I didn't, I don't have access to the STAR report as far as um, that's the Smith Travel Research that can provide you that information. So it would be wise, very wise for us to, to obtain that and verify to your exact point, what are the organizations that we would like to go after and really allow that whatever agency, whether it's a department within the city or what have you, to really create that plan. I mean, I write them a lot, more than I wished I had to. But the point is, is you marked your orders toward, we're gonna bring in five new organizations equalling twenty-two hundred room nights. And then you measure up against that and rather than hoping that you're gonna get these organizations, you're really physically writing the expectation down and then verifying what support you need to have happen in order for that to take place. I will call out BKP has a salesperson that they do work with the Conference Center on getting these events and they, they run into where the city's hotel guest rooms, you can't commit that many because you're already filling with contractors. So there's just times where it's difficult to get all of that under one area. And more importantly, it might be something that you just decide after you've done those research with all of those numbers that you ended up having that's like, ooh, maybe we only want to go after Sunday through Wednesday events because it looks like Friday through Saturday's full. So it really would, to your most important point, be very specific, very measurable, very actionable, very reasonable and very timely. And that's a smart plan. So there's ways that we can get into, you know, holding folks to that outcome and expectation.
That makes sense. Good. Now, last kind of question and, and a big comment is uh, so obviously there's, there's kind of two types of money that LTAC money can be spent on. There's the, there's the marketing side. But it's tourism in general uh, for the area or special events, festivals. And then there's the operation of tourism related facilities, whether owned by the city or nonprofits. And it looks like you touched on a little bit and you know, recommending and investing in some of the uh, sports facilities for kind of one-off events, but did you look into at all the impact of funding or not funding, you know? We have a couple of big ones. We have the Conference Center, we have Admiral Theater, that's where a lot of the LTAC money goes. And then we have a lot of other uh nonprofits. And like the impact of funding or not funding those, because I have in the back of my head, hey, we can do all the tourism dollars we want, we do all the marketing we want, but we still have a quarter of buildings downtown that are empty, right? We have organizations that are just barely skating by and if they don't get LTAC dollars, you know, they may not exist. They may not have anything to market. So, so that's a very ambiguous question, but, but when I think of like, where do we spend LTAC dollars? Is it really on marketing first? Or is it on making sure that we have a city that people want to visit and they can spend a full day or a whole weekend and have a whole cadre of activities to do, places to go?
Yeah. And I think that really, you know, having looked at it when um, boy, am I gonna like Denise speak to my age. Um, I was part of a, a hotel association in the state of Washington that honestly went after some of the cities that were using dollars we felt inappropriately. Because LTAC dollars were initially established specifically for what you just spoke to, marketing or operating. That's it. But I'm now seeing, well, restrooms have been, have been taken care of in certain cities. And so I think there's a reality that if you can validate that there is, and there is thirty-seven point two billion dollars worth in the United States of travel sports. What could we do in the city of Bremerton by marrying ourselves up with an organization that already is going to get dollars and have the Pendergast location and the location in Polsbo and basically do like, I don't know, the peninsula smackdown or whatever. I'm horrible at those kind of names. But the point is, is I think what I was looking to is really responding to the hoteliers who kept asking me, why is it always downtown? Why is it always downtown? And then pivoting over and checking with the leadership at a KCC and validating, you know, how many times do you get events? And they say, well, we're, we're having a difficult time because this, these room nights don't fit here. These room nights don't fit here. So again, it would be one organization that could validate when they need it, what hours we're gonna, you know, what times a day, what, what days of the week, et cetera, and really create a plan and make it realistic to all of you to know, three, we're gonna get three this year rather than thirty or forty. Um, and that's just not giving the increase I think you professionally need or want. It's not to suggest they won't still be wanting, holding, held responsible to do that in their plan. But I think we need to open up a bigger marketplace. I think we need to go out and really find what is it that we want to say that is Bremerton, that aligns with Bremerton and really validates all of us who tra- have traveled or are traveling. There should be locations on the peninsula where you can have these kind of events for youth sports or adult sports. So because it had been proposed when I was at, you know, in the city, I felt it was a very, very important idea and I do think it's still a very viable marketplace to consider. Did I answer the question or did I just rattle on?
I think for, for the most part, I'd say maybe not all there, but that's okay. A lot to study.
Uh, Eric or Michael?
Sure. Well, it's not really a question. Uh, well, I guess maybe it is, but it's, I, I agree with a lot of, of, maybe everything that Jeff said. And, and I thought I asked like where, you know, the, the, the concept of this. Um, and because it's, it's, it is a bit of a mess, uh, but it's sort of like our mess and it's, and it's uh, it's helping sustain a lot of, you know, a lot of things uh, for our downtown. So I definitely don't see this as a rip the Band-Aid off. Uh, and you know, do something, I think, uh, if, well, I guess maybe only Eric would remember, but when I was running LTAC, like I was trying to create something where like we encouraged new things, like new startup events or festivals. We were trying to also get it where, you know, you don't get like thirty-five thousand one year and then forty thousand the next year and you're, now you're applying for fifty. It goes the other way. You kind of try to wean yourself off of lodging packs. It should not be part of your sustainability, but we want to help somebody get to sustainability. Um, and then kind of on this thing, even kind of on the restroom line or whatever, obviously, you know, if we don't have nice amenities and we don't have places to eat, we don't have places to shop and places to pick up things. The city manager on Bainbridge Island, he, he, his line was uh, you know, if I can't buy a pair of men's underwear downtown, it's, 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 you know, it doesn't have everything you need. And I think we'll figure out we possibly get somewhere, but um, well, yeah, no. Um, but you know, sometimes like uh, uh, on Bainbridge, it was like more of a sporting store, but um, but you know, so we, we, we need these things in place. And so we kind of have to come up with a plan and um, you know, uh, Denise can kind of relate to this, you know? It makes me think of like, under the nonprofit world, we look at a strategic plan, like where do we want to be? Where do we want lodging packs to be in five years? Maybe longer, but uh, five years. And then, okay, so then what are the steps we do each year to move us in that right direction? Now, we could all do that. We could be a hundred percent. And then, you know, two years, there could be a, a different council makeup and they could change, the needs could change or things. It, it, it's tricky, but um, so I don't know, Lori, if you have any thoughts on like, how do we get from uh, you know, Bremerton today to uh, the, kind of the plan that you're suggesting? Because, you know, I, I have seen too where there's uh, places where there is somebody like the, the, the um, like this, the uh, you know, like the chamber or something like that, that gets a lot of funds and then they do some of the giving to some of these festivals and organizations and sites like that. So, you know, that's you know, another possibility. But I'm just wondering if you could maybe, I'm sure you've thought of this a little bit, so.
I, I do think you said, you hit it perfectly. There are a lot of very, very viable, very, very good organizations that are getting funds, but to your point, you're spreading them out. And so in my view, you know, scope of work has been um attached to the plan that was provided to me by the Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce um executive. And I think, you know, it, it really opened my professional eyes just to go, oh, wow, how much? And it's a sizable fee that that individual's getting annually. And I think that that's the point. I do believe it would remove a bit of the politics, maybe, from it and really evaluate against that idea, Mike, that you had in terms of being able to just say, you know, this is where I want this product Bremerton to be in ten years. Cause I understand you're redoing your strategic plan for the city. I think this is a magical time to be able to really think through. It used to drive me crazy because I'd go to Kita events in, in Bremerton and you'd never saw tourism up on the, up on there as far as what we contribute. And I think what we have to get better is realizing it is a viable industry and we have to measure it and verify what it's doing and validate honestly its impact. Because some of the research we did, I found a couple of organizations that really are talking about sustainable approaches to tourism. And I'm like, oh, because it does impact roads. I mean, there were times when I lived on Bainbridge, I couldn't say anything because obviously it was my industry, but it's like, oh my gosh, don't stop and watch the stupid ferry unload because I can't get off this ferry, you know? So there's times where you can't manage what the impact is to the downtown market because it can be both positive and negative. In some places you don't go downtown Bremerton on Sat- or downtown Bainbridge on Saturdays. You're just like, forget it. So you've got to think about that. You've got people who live there who deserve to have their city. So how are you going to balance that as well? So I wish there were a peanut butter and jelly sandwich I could just hand it to you and say, here. But I do think that this council, just stopping and asking the questions really is admirable. And secondly, I cannot and won't overestimate how valuable a business plan with goals and expectations being measured out by somebody who understands tourism and really can shift and ask bigger questions and ask more important questions like earlier, how much if we gave this much money to organization B versus organization A, could we or should we return? And I think it might um relinquish you of some of the ties that you feel accountable to and instead make it a business strategic expectation plan that um is measured. Very, very, you know, monthly or quarterly at minimum.
I, I just want to, the last thing kind of on this, like the sort of discrepancy, it's so hard to calculate actually room stays. You know, you just, you start to do a little bit of math and then you start to maybe make an educated guess. And then maybe you add a couple because you want to make sure it looks good because you don't want them to go, oh, seven hotel stays and you're getting a million dollars. That's pretty expensive per stay. Uh, you know, so there's, even though that, that is the metric, again, it's, it's, it's a lot of these things that make the city a desirable place to book a conference or to, you know, to do that. So it, it's just super hard. Um, and I actually, uh, I'm thankful that Melinda helps with it here because on Bainbridge Island, they just said, here, you're logging for J-Lark, boot yourself. And then what?
I don't know.
It's, yeah, so.
All right. Um, so Eric, I'll go right ahead.
Well, my comments are, it's a little depressing, Lori. We were going to have that third hotel downtown.
Oh, I know.
The economy did what it did and like, became apartments. I understand they can be converted back over, but uh, that was the whole hope of how we're gonna fill the convention center. Conference center, I should say. And I think we have to understand that and pivot with the understanding that perhaps it'll change, but not in the foreseeable future. So I like the idea of sharing with the other hotelers out throughout the city. And I do like the idea of binding with other municipalities for regional events. I think that might be a smart thing to do. And arguably you could say that our outlined hotels need more support than the downtown ones just because apparently all the contractors are filling the spaces, at least anecdotal. So, um, there's a lot here to digest, but that was my biggest takeaway for tonight is uh, I'd like us to consider going in that direction.
If you have time, try to take a peek through and then, you know, I, I always, I, number one, I had no idea how much time city council members put into. So if I never said thank you to you when I was there, thank you. I do just appreciate all of what you do. But secondly, take some time to take a peek at what it is that the Gig Harbor is doing. And really you, you're close enough, you could ask, maybe there's some glaring challenges that they're seeing with it. But I did appreciate the viability of potentially finding someone outside of the city staff to actually oversee this and really make uh, an effective accountability to outcomes, to your earlier point. Um, and maybe reporting up into a market like community development or something that really ties into your point, we need in more hotel rooms. So what are we doing to be developing that? To be able to get the street life, to be able to get an understanding of what it is that Bremerton is. We can't without um, you know, but you could go into numbers and not verify that the Conference Center was a good idea. But you can't look at the waterfront and not know what a spectacular idea it was. And so it's really looking and knowing where you kind of find that market. And I, I only used the travel market because of how many times it was brought up that we travel and we have to go off island. And it's really the bigger question, what could we do with perk to be able to make it more of a community area and go after a totally different market segment? So that becomes part of that business plan with those goals, with those marketing plans, et cetera, to get the word out that this is what Bremerton does.
Thank you. Uh, Anna, uh, and you'll close us out here.
You have no?
Okay. Um, I do, I'm gonna ask a quick question at the end. I apologize. I have one quick question at the end.
Okay. Um, Denise, you've been working on getting this assessment done for over a year. Is that about right? And thank you for your persistence. Um, I really, I like the idea of things being measurable and quantifiable and verifiable. Like everyone else, this is one of my favorite factoids ever about like, you know, the um, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three room nights. Oh, almost eighty-five percent more than there are rooms. That was pretty great. Um, I thought that the interesting alternative of marketing to our smaller hotels, marketing to family events like, like Pendergast, but also like the science fair, um, things like that. Um, what I found most striking was the, you kept repeating and, and people you talked to couldn't really answer it. What's our brand? What's our vision? What are our objectives? And what is the vision for Bremerton? Um, I, I really think that that's a question we should be jumping up and down and answering and bringing as many people together. Um, to, to figure that out because I think a, a lot of these answers would flow from it. Um, Lori, thank you for this presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity. I hope all of you know, I love that city. I miss some of the faces and their mayors. Delightful to see you again. And I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. It was um, it was something I had to step back from because I kept like, well, how are they gonna do this? How are they gonna? And more importantly, my role as the consultant was to come in and say, I think this is what we need to do. So I appreciate your open eyes and open arms and open opportunities to, to look where we can take Bremerton because um, she's, she's perfectly poised. I'm very excited for her.
Thank you, Ms. Main. Um, just really quick, uh, I wanted to kind of check in. We keep hearing about hoteliers and maybe this is just controversial and that's why I'm not getting kind of answers from time to time, but we have so many short-term rentals that are used. I'm per- I'm personally a short-term renter. When I go places, I like to have my own kitchen, that sort of thing. Is it controversial to ask why we always talk about hoteliers versus short-term renters?
No, because they're part of the LTAC funding. Mike, is that correct, Mr. Riley? Yeah. So they do also, it's just more, to your point, difficult to um verify, you know, how many you have because those numbers aren't.
I think one reason is because they're not all registered. Um, so uh, that might be one issue. Um, okay, I would love to see data for, I, I mean, that's the way we're moving. I mean, I hate to, you know, burst the bubble, but we're moving towards short-term rentals as being, you know, uh, more used than hotels, I would think. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Denise, you have your hand. I want to go ahead and let you close us out.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is uh, if
One is if a short-term rental is listed on any of those platforms like Airbnb or VRBO, they require you to have a short-term, you know, license and it has to be registered. Taxes are taken out, they're sent directly to the municipality. So there are other ways, of course, of rentals. And then I thought I could close this out with Jeff Cofflin was just telling me about an exercise that he and others at the DBA had been doing. And that was like getting in a room with a bunch of people and talking about Bremerton and words and, you know, slogans and stuff. And I said, yeah, I remember doing that four years ago. And I happen to think all the wasted energy that we all have participated in, it's been fun, you know? I have word charts that are awesome, but nothing happened with them. So let's do the word chart and then do it as part of a larger plan. So thank you, Lori. Thank you, council. Great questions tonight. And that's it for me.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Main, for joining us tonight. And this is a very wonderful, this is a great summary that you've created for us, a great recommendation.
Thank you.
Pathway, so have a wonderful rest of your evening.
I will. Thank you. You as well.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the.
We bring this back up during Topland Economic Development Index.
Say that one more time.
We make sure to go back to this during our discussion of the economic portion of the Topland.
Okay, yes. Yeah, you got it. Well, we have a.
Later.
Let me pull out my, I do have a.
TBD.
Because I love meetings. I really think we've got to spend much, much more time on this subject sooner rather than later and keep it going like a continuing discussion. I don't know if it's once a month or once every two months, but this is going to, there's a lot of things to think about. I know we're all trying to move on to the next. What is the branding of Bremerton? Are we a Navy town? The whole thing. I mean, I've heard this over and over again.
Yeah. You know, this is a big, big. They did a big survey, like I think we had like 300 participants. Probably not down at like, it was a set of questions I got from my consultant to try to figure out what people thought of Bremerton. I mean, this is years ago too, but it was definitely starting to skew towards like entertainment, you know, dining, entertainment.
And to your point, if you can't buy underwear in the town, then you're not.
Consider it the marketing town?
No. So.
Little bear's in the back.
Hey.
Well, that's okay. How late are they open today? Maybe I can get down there real quick.
What is the vision for Bremerton? Like what is Bremerton?
Well, and see, this is what we're doing. We're doing it because we're starting to talk about it because it's so fun. I say Kylie and Mike and I, we're talking like, what do we do with this? What do we, how do we, we got to get a plan. We got to, I think we got to take that 15 grand that we, that they're saying allocate, you know, to the support of this. I don't know how much a plan costs. I don't know anything like that. But then we would have it. We would have a brand. It would, it would say the things that we've all been saying, only it would be professionally done by people that, not that we don't know what we're doing, but you know what I mean.
So let's have this as a study session topic. And let's plan for this to be under General Counsel Business Discussions for October 23rd. Does that sound okay?
It's fine as long as that's a light meeting because we need to spend like an hour on it.
Okay, I'll look at that.
I think that's realistic.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Thank you. Yes.
We've been talking about making changes, so.
Budget work jumps the next day.
Are we going to discuss our budget stuff at the study session? Though there's probably other business. I'll check it out. I do have a list of what's happening, but I don't think it's incredibly full. I'll consult staff on that. So I'm penciling it in for October 23rd. If, October 9th is lighter, I'll bump it up. So. Did I say that right? You looked at me funny. I'm looking at the.
Talked about something before the meeting about my activities.
You're going to be gone, well, you said you're going to be gone. Okay. Well, then, okay, we won't bump it up. We'll just say it's penciled in for October 23rd. And if that doesn't work, then we'll get it, we'll have to do it after budget season because I want to make sure the budget season, I hope, before we bring up another item. So moving on to the next item, we have Agenda Bill Briefings, B1. Mayor Wheeler, you're on deck for the appointment of Susan Blackburn to the Bremerton Arts Commission.
Yes. Yes, so I think you've seen her resume. And so I'd like to present Susan Blackburn to you for your approval.
Okay.
Consent?
Consent? No. Council, any questions?
Who represents her? Or where does she show?
What? Oh, well, she was down, where did I see her art recently? In Lori's studio, but I'm.
The Q4 place?
Yeah, I think that's where I saw her art recently.
Yeah.
My package struggle, that's why I apologize. But it's not hyperlinked. It's not there. Just anymore about her time in the city?
Oh, wait, no, it's there. I'm sorry. It wasn't hyperlinked. It's there.
Just fairly long-term residence.
That was my first, last and only question. Consent sounds fun to me.
I could ask, what is art?
What is art?
But actually, I'd like to.
Is the axe that breaks the frozen speed?
I shouldn't have said I.
How many? You just walked right into it.
I think we just had a recent unfortunate vacancy. Are there any other vacancies on the Arts Commission that need to be fulfilled?
There could be another.
Okay, all right. Consent. Anybody else consent?
Nope.
Thank you. That was easy. All right. And after this next item, council will take a 10-minute break. The next item is B1, Fire Chief Pat McGanney. B2, just kidding, B2. Good news.
We got a new boat. Oh, oh.
Acceptance Important Security Grant through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. I didn't need to say the acronym, but I just did. For the purchase of a new rescue fireboat. Council Fry was just discussing committee.
We knew that the application was, it was, yeah, it, yeah. Chief called me and it was just so exciting. I think it was very competitive. He and staff wrote the grant and congratulations, chief.
Any no lingering issues, correct?
All right. We got a new boat.
We already know this. Yeah, Chief McGanney, take it away.
Thank you for letting us, let me be here tonight to present. Yes, very exciting news. We applied for the Port Security Grant from FEMA. We were one of 13 chosen applicants in the state of Washington. So this, the grant total is for $796,000. We have a 25% match, which is just over $199,000, which will get us a new boat. First, we'll have to go out the bid and through that process. But we have some very capable boat manufacturers locally that we've had some discussions with and are very excited to get this project started.
Campy and a parade, that's.
Well, no, that's not true. It is trailerable.
It could be on a trailer.
We could trailer it if we wanted.
I could stand at the wheel on the trailer.
I really like this one lets injured, like people who are injured lie down. I'm very excited about that aspect.
All right, Council Fry, do you have anything to add to this before we go to other counselors' questions? Okay, other counselors, any questions? Jeff and then Eric?
Do we require city matches of budget for next year? Or is it going to be presented as a year-long budget for next year? So we've presented it as upcoming budget, so.
It's about a year and a half out.
Eric?
What's the length of this boat? This one is proposed to be between 31 and 33 feet. So a full cabin on it, which will allow us to get patients out of weather. Will increase our firefighting capability. Now we'll have a thousand gallon pump on it. Much larger cabin. It will be CDRN, which is kind of a biological and nuclear certified filtration system in the cab. Yes, that's part of the grant. You have to certify it in that, so. And of course, we'll have all the latest electronics.
What's the size of your current boat?
It is 30 feet with the offshore bracket that we put on.
Okay.
So this one will be 10 feet wide. Our current boat is eight feet six inches wide.
So substantially bigger than this boat.
Yes.
Are there any additional training requirements? You mentioned one about some kind of new thing out there. Is this going to require a lot more training for your firefighters?
No, just the initial training. We, they train every Wednesday currently. Their boat inspection, make sure it's one and then one, five, three.
Can you, throwing you a loop, but do you have a rough idea of how many calls of service that your boat experience is not giving you?
No, you thought I would use. We're, over the last two years, we've averaged about 80, had about 80 calls, about 40 calls a year. We've had some significant rescues with boats and we've also helped extinguish some fires.
And then, I'm not against this boat, but just to go, if you didn't have this boat, because years ago, you recall, we had a boat and then for whatever reason it said not to use and it was hanging there or whatever, it was a small.
No, it's our current boat.
Okay, was it, but it was hanging up in the. So we don't need to go there. Anyway, if you didn't have this boat, what would you rely on for water rescues?
Well, we'd be waiting for mutual aid out of, and then Central Kitsap has a trailered boat that it takes, well, right now it has to come from, I think, Station 41, which is above the fairground. So they have the trailer down, we put it in water. The boats that are in the water would be Kitsap County Sheriff, boat which is out of Fort Orchard, which they have a long response time to get to it. A pilot, and then the only other one, Bainbridge Island, and Kitsap and Paul's Boat, which are coming, one's coming out of Eagle Harbor, the other one's coming out of Paul's Boat. Well, the Navy, that's one of our issues, that they're security boats. That's who we were relying on. But they're hit and miss whether they can come, their response is not rapid because they've got to get permission to leave because their mission is security of the base.
Okay, so turn up 80 calls of service, sounds like for general recent current boats. I don't.
You're diligent. Michael?
No questions. Where do we keep the current?
Current boat is in the water down here at Marin.
Okay. And what are we going to do with the current boat after, when we get a new boat?
The current boat will be surplus.
And then for the new boat, how many council members can be on it at that point? Can you carry a quorum?
Well, we could, yes. The cockpit area is figuring out.
You can have a meeting there if you wanted to.
Okay.
We could name it the quorum.
Yeah, take note.
Have a cooler.
Dave Thorsten needs to know how to cut a rig up sound for.
Serious question, do you know how much you might get from the surplus of the boat?
I'm going to rough guess around between 50 and 70,000 dollars. The boat isn't, this is current boat, we had it repowered in 2018. So it's not a jet drive anymore, so it's got wind outboards on it.
So they get a fair price.
Last couple of years, we put a new pump on it. It's not, the pumps are a little bit rougher to you because of the saltwater.
Right.
They don't last as long. But we put probably a foot over the last six or seven years, but it's fine. I mean, the hole is a 1991 hole.
1991.
I'm serious questioning how to fend off barrel otter.
Anna.
Well, it does have a thousand gays on it, deck gun on it, so.
Does the 50K or however much that you get for surplus go to pay down our city cash match estimate?
Yeah, it goes back into the general fund, so.
It goes to the general fund, but is that the same as? Because Eric keeps educating me about what happens when things go into the general fund. Not just a, would it be a giant bull in the finance director? So the 50,000 plus that would be obtained for the surplus once this boat is surplus and may that day come soon. Can that be applied against the city cash match estimate?
Yes.
To pay it down? That's it? Congratulations, chief. And I really like, what are those things? They're not thols. What are the things you use to secure fishing rods, the edge of a boat? To the gunwales?
Don't look at me.
Yes, will we have to supply our own?
Maybe we'll put mountains on it.
Where's that $200,000 coming from your cash match? Is that out of the fire department budget? Is that out of ERR or where's it going? General fund balance, interested in that. And that's for next year's?
Next year, yes. The build time's over a year once we sign the contract. Projected delivery time is first couple of months, first quarter of 2026.
26, okay. Yeah, consent?
Yes, totally.
All right. Thank you, Chief McGanney. And thank you for your support of the city. We're going to go ahead and take a break. I'm going to bring us back to order at 6:45.
Ready to invest in.
Permit only residential restricted parking zone.
Thank you. If you don't want to promote me, our co-hosts are going to security in our neighborhood.
Well, thank you. You've got it. You're you are the co-host is host with most. Wait, how am I saying that wrong? You should be good.
Go. All right. So we have some updated slides from last week. And I'll go through a few and then Melinda will present a few field questions. So yes, two weeks ago, I brought this to station along with Denise, Jennifer, supporting on a agreeing to bring it forward. Just really brought some feedback residents along lower Washington Avenue. And I know both Michael and Eric were on that study session. So we discussed it in general business last week. Michael was there. Eric, I know you were you're out on that one. So really appreciate all the all the questions, the deep dive and the due diligence on this. So I've come back trying to answer some of those questions and Melinda has really worked hard as well answering those in addition. Let me go here. So in addition to the presentation from last time, residents after last week kind of continue to take pictures and every evening just to document that indeed this street is full in the evenings by their reporting. So here's some photos on Thursday, September ninth, the night after our last council meeting. I'll show them. Basically, nothing is full except for one accessible space. And that is that is due to somebody who we know is actually in town for a week. And more recent photos from from another residence right there. Sure you can't. Yeah, that's the one accessible space that's that's that you can see that's open, but again designated accessible. And we know the resident nearby who does use that and has a path out for another week or so.
May I ask you what question on that or the picture just briefly?
Can you hold up the questions to the end to the presentation?
I'll be asking about that. Yes. No, you're not. Please continue. I appreciate it.
So it's an email sent, you know, to me, it wasn't the whole council, but I wanted to take part of it just to kind of convey, I think, some of the frustration of the residents along this street. That this is, you know, this project been ongoing for several years before, I think several of us were on council, including myself. And this kind of documents they have really been involved with the city. And I give a lot of kudos to Public Works and Melinda for for working with them and for going down and meeting. And Mayor myself were attending meetings early 2021 on this issue. Yeah, but you know, they are just frustrated because for several years with this project, you know, they didn't a lot of them didn't ask for it, but a longstanding city project, but they have been concerned about parking and about the impact to that for a long time. So from their perspective, they've been trying to work with the city for several years. And that's why they're, you know, I think frustrated. This isn't necessarily, you know, sailing through. I think council had excellent questions, but I'll just kind of let you read that just so you can see their their, you know, where they're coming from in the moment right now and why they why they've really asked for this as a solution to their problems.
It's not in the packet, right?
There's like I got. Yeah, I'm just. No, not in the packet. So but it will be.
Can you go back?
Yep, I can do. Probably no one. So this this was written after the last council meeting, obviously in response to some of the discussion. Everyone good? Thank you all. And so had a good long talk with Melinda, my co-residents last week after our last meeting, clarifying some things. One is that with the current residential parking pass, there is a two block limit. Of course, Melinda jumping anytime if I ever say anything incorrect. But when you look at Washington, Lower Washington on the right there, two block limit for them is really, really limited. So they obviously they can't park a block or two to the north because there's water for the most part. There's 11th Street Place, but that's about it. You can't park to the east towards Manette because there's water. You can't park south because there is no parking law on Washington Ave. And then you round about all the way down to, you know, go down to about Sixth Street there. Can't park on Highland. Highland is residential permit only at the moment. So if they can't find parking on Lower Washington, trying to get nearby is a real challenge compared to other parts of the city that are more inland and that may have a grid like structure. You got a lot more degrees of freedom to try and find parking nearby. But with them, they're extremely constrained. So it kind of reinforces this is a really unique unique street to try and park on. I did want to point out too, talking to Melinda that if we went this route with the residential only parking pass, they would be restricted to Lower Washington Ave. So they're not getting an extra benefit. They're not going to be able to park on Lower Washington Ave or 11th Street if they want or Pleasant. They would have to park in Lower Washington Ave because that's residential permit only. The exception being, of course, if there was a two hour under limit elsewhere in the city, they could park there, but they're not they're not getting Washington and the others. They would just get Washington. And folks who didn't live on there couldn't park on Washington.
Can they still park within the radius?
No, they would have to park on lower lower Washington.
Hold your questions.
Hold your tongue.
End of the presentation. No, it's fine. You're in charge, buddy. Your presentation.
Okay, so is this the only map we're gonna have? I can.
I think I got another one or two.
So we're looking at how many how many homes, those are all single family residences, I believe.
A lot of older families.
Their family.
Actually, yeah, I'm gonna go through the rest here and then.
Okay, so I'd like to know approximately how many.
There's a group home on that block.
How many units we're talking about and is that realistic and how many?
Yes, so we got that. Yes, let's go in there. So in short, there's no driveways along the street.
Right.
Got on the presentation from last time. I know you aren't here, but all these homes are built early 1900s. There's no no driveways and no.
There is one driveway. There's not a driveway. There's one gap at the end of 11th Street Place in Washington. There's a space. It's a bit of a driveway. That.
Okay. Yeah, I'm on this.
Meter cars.
Driveways, no garages.
Like the wild.
Yeah. I did want to add in talking to residents since last week. So Public Works has a very nicely detailed map with spaces counted. And again, they've they've worked really hard to try and fit in as many spaces along the street as possible with the construction. But there's just limitations due to the geography, limitations due to fire code. And so there are forty four spaces, you know, officially counted on that map. If you notice from the pictures, there's not delineated spots. It's just one long strip and that was that was done on purpose to really try and squeeze in as much space as possible. But the residents lately, they they kind of looked at that and they said, yeah, by the map, there's supposed to be able to fit seven cars in here. In practice, we've only seen six be able to fit in there. So I want to point that out that although forty four is the official number, residents are kind of saying forty two is the most we can really squeeze in. And then to some comments last time, yeah, the houses along this row are, I'm gonna talk, it's a lot of young families, a lot of multiple roommates. There's some ADUs, there's multifamily dwellings. Yeah, I think there's Jennifer said group home. So these are not, you know, these are not all, I'm just gonna say wealthy retired couples with just two people in them. A lot of these houses have multiple residents. And so it's a dense area. This is where Melinda's, you know, I don't know, do you want to talk to these slides and then I can in the back? Yeah. So Melinda was really, really kind to put together the next couple of slides and then I just got one more on my own at the end.
Um, so yeah, so currently, and this is this is the key point. The signage, you can see there. It is only Monday through Friday, five a.m. to seven p.m. So that means at five oh five, if you were to park there without a permit, at seven oh five, two hours later, you park could not enforce against you. There would be nothing they can do. And that will be given through the weekend. So as you can see, that next rule sentence there, it kind of talks about that situation and it's often been reported to us, you know, that, you know, they'd like us to enforce during that time that there is unpermitted parkers there. So it's a great comment. And and kind of adds to the current situation. And then the next slide. The current number of permits there are actually thirty six. Oh, this is twenty six total number. It is since the average number of parkers there that is twenty six. But the actual number of permits, basically, I guess, they're assigned to. And that's effective this month, May, through next June. And we have a policy in place, policy two thirty oh two that allows to limit the maximum number of permits that you would issue into any street in the city. And that maximum is you eighty five percent. Generally, parking automatically standard. We have room. We go around within that policy to say, okay, well, we're gonna say ninety nine percent is where we're gonna stop, but but we can limit it to eighty five percent. That's what's needed. And that includes basically that that is that policy was going to address this grandfather unit, this multi-class unit. And to allow for the ADU development. But still recognize that you have people that own their houses there, may not have any off-street parking, who bought that house with that in mind. And now you have maybe a multi-unit that's developed or additional ADU units that are developed. And instead of that pushing the people out, we can simply say just the maximum number of parking from the new issue. And so if need be, we can enact that there. The units that are there are grandfathered in. I think you go those grandfathered in. But if they were to add more units or simply ask for more parking permits, like someone in nine oh two, well, now unit five would be like three percent, so the two to one, we can simply say no. We've finished one and we cannot issue anymore. Unit five gets, you know, this, how many parking permits do this property get? And that's as many as can be issued there. So we have that capability within that policy. Let's say we don't see a lot of change, like we don't expect to see a lot of change there, but it's always a potential. You know, there are some empty lots there. There are two homes that do not have permits there of any kind. They just have never applied and never wanted to, that they use off-street parking. And that's what they want. Nine forty nine, nine fifteen. And so if you went through and said that, you'll probably want to step, but just so you know, that's that's a potential. If nine forty nine could say, I want my two permits on street. And you could say we've got two permits. We have thirty six, the cat is thirty eight, or we could go up to that ninety two percent.
I was clarifying on that, just to make sure I really understood what you just said. So you're saying that this this area of the nine hundred block or two blocks, whatever, there are permits already issued for all but two properties. Okay, so nobody else has just been parking without any kind of permit or anything?
Well, no, I think there has been people parking without permits, but that brings back that's that seven P M cutoff time. So what I think we see there is people parking without permits there. But we can't do anything about it.
Because I guess what I'm, the concern I'm sitting thinking about is if there's like if we pass this, that they're gonna now be just like rushed or the people who didn't give us two two laps. You know, maybe we could squeeze three if we use the old number, but for the planned number, but it's a, I don't know. A little first come, you know, and then do we do a lottery every year? Does it just renew people and then you get on a waiting list to get in or I don't know. So doesn't seem like it's that big an issue if the only places without permits have off-street parking, that's reasonable things right now.
Right, right. The way we address it in in the policy is that basically everybody would stay status quo. And then if, you know, if somebody moved out and then came back in and replied, that's when we would say no. You know, if we had people that had never applied, you know, right now, I don't think we would say no to that. And we have room. But let's say, you know, we, they applied and we have somebody move out and apply for more. You know, we're certainly, probably the reason those residents are there and say, hey, well, this unit has always had one unit, you know, one permit. Your property overall has, you know, eight permits. You cannot have any more. And this is as many as this property gets. And another property that has never even had one, you might get one. But we all also are going to be talking about, this is how many parking spaces on the street. This is what we have. So.
Essentially remedies, everybody who has is currently accustomed to parking until, you know, the big project, which remove parking. Everyone who's currently accustomed to it has a permit, there's room for a few more. But then, yeah, in the future, if there were to be lots and lots more people moving here, we get ten more ADUs on the street. But at least be able to go in knowing, you know, knowing that ahead of time that, hey, I may rent this ADU or create it, but there's not, it is not free space.
Eric, go right ahead.
I I think I did, because I saw the policy said only eighty five percent, but you're saying that the extra six are going to be reserved for more development. So it could be, there's forty four spaces, you know, maximize it eventually. But you're gonna leave those open for the new development and visitor. Well, it's no visitor work. So that's the way it works for all of it. They have temporary ones they can give the visitor and then they put it there for or like how many hours to the visitor. Does it like a repairman or something?
Yeah, yeah. So there's two kinds. A visitor, they can use it within a one block radius. So they actually can be within a one block. Or a lot of times people will say, okay, so I'm gonna park off-street today. You can get my, if they have it available. The service, oh, and they can use it for up to five days within a period, day period. So basically, like you can have some stay with you for five days. And so parking enforcement, oh, I'm sure I did something.
No, I love the title.
Not just another pretty face.
Yeah, no, it's not. Although it's still a pretty cool place. But it it does have some factors that are used for parking enforcement. It is an area that currently is essentially unsigned in nights and weekends. It's commuter impacted downtown for hub locations. If you work downtown or just attending events downtown, you might go eye no spot. And so for us, the other thing that's key about this location is that it's kind of on our way to everywhere. So we are either, we go by this location quite often. We are, you know, going over to what we call the North East Zone, so over to the east side to enforce. And that's just right around the circle there. Where we are going down towards Evergreen Park to enforce. So it's an area that we can add in for regular enforcement. But anytime we add we are at our max capacity. So anytime we add something, we're almost taking away from something else. So we were to add this in at a regular enforcement time, the most effective way is with the residential permit. We can do it in other ways. We can do it simply by expanding those hours to twenty four seven, Monday through Sunday. You know, seven days a week, but that does require two trips for us. So it is the most effective way to simply go down the street with the LPR one time and just the non-permitted parking.
I have to figure out the acronym.
I did have a question about the permit, but I just want to share if it was the right time to ask it. Jeff, do you do you want to?
Last slide is.
Okay, let's do last slide and then I'll go back, circle back.
Back in time and added these other questions. Did I just include it? Some maps as well of the actual numbers of the houses? In case anyone wanted to stare or look at the one that probably had permits. So it will be in the packet, I think. But that's it.
Good, okay. Anna, go right ahead.
Okay, so I drove by this Monday at noon from downtown and there were, I have photographed, there were like Jane's photograph, there were just about exactly the same numbers. There were like twelve or thirteen open spots, like along the whole stretch. That's my first thing. We said last week that we need more data. I think we still need more data because I think the residents' pictures, Jane's pictures, my pictures. I want to give the residents the benefit of the doubt and say, even though theirs show like cramped conditions and and ours do not, I'd like.
To to be clear on what the residents have been saying is that yeah, noon, there's there's open spots, but it's in the evenings. It's they're coming home from work after five, they're getting there at six or seven. Those are the pictures they're showing in the evening that it's it's full up and there's people, you know, personally testifying that yeah, they can't find any parking there and they have the park ways away.
And against that, we have Jane's photos. So I'm just saying, in my opinion, we need more data and.
To your point, yeah, I want to make that distinction clear during this evening.
And then the other thing is.
Yeah. She say Jane's photos.
Yeah, they're in the packet.
Thank you.
Oh, I believe so. Her email is in the packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Page fifty one.
See any photos of this.
Okay.
Her email, yeah.
Then I have them probably on my phone. But yeah, if the photos exist and you'll just have to take my word for it, especially because I'm saying let's not take the word of counselors. Let's like look at what residents are saying a little more. My second and final point is it seems like this has a high probability of just pushing the problem onto another street. Because who would enforce the two block radius? It would be the same in park. Who cannot enforce evenings and weekends? So.
When you say two block radius.
The residential permit only works within that, not within that two block, along that two block stretch.
So in this case, what they're proposing is that they are using a special permit designation for residential. And that point kind of went quickly, but in this case, it would be slightly different than our normal program. To be fair, so those residents, their permit is only good on their street. What they're saying is we don't want other people to park on our street. It's residents only, and we're not gonna park on your street.
Okay.
We're gonna use our street, our permit parking. So then the only outside use would be visitors, which are still within one block. But that's, it's kind of.
Okay.
I'm just too black with it. I don't know these people, but I'm just going to speak to the council about how often one promises. One says, absolutely, I am going to empty the dishwasher every other time. And yet somehow that doesn't happen. So I'm just saying, like, we're making here a a real, this this is a very different permitting. And I I would like to make sure that we take our time. Yeah.
So I'm kind of on what Anna was saying. Like we can change the stickers on the cars and we can change the signs on the street. And it doesn't change the problem because it's an enforcement issue. And in part doesn't enforce at night when the residents feel they don't have any parking. So that's just one thing, one or two. The other thing is I don't believe when you think that somebody is parking on Lower Washington to go downtown and have a beer. I mean, people complain about downtown parking so much because they can't park right in front of the business they want to go to. Now, I didn't think that the idea that maybe a shipyard worker who's driving from further up could park there and then just walk right downtown. I believe that. But now I'm getting told that it's not a problem at noon. It's not shipyard workers. And I can tell you that a nighttime shipyard worker can get away with parking in any of the neighborhoods right outside the gate because there's no enforcement at night. Except the neighborhood I live in. Right outside the neighborhood. So I I I want to make sure I know what the problem is. And 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 that we can solve the problem for folks. And my concern is that most of those cars parked down there right now probably are all living down there. And once half of them can't get a pass, it's going to create another problem. So he's gonna move the problem possibly, assuming we're gonna enforce it and write a bunch of tickets.
But, okay, there was mention that there were some people that were living on the block in their cars. So that was mentioned. So yes, people living there. I mean, but you know, but in their cars. That was mentioned. And I mean, I'm curious about the data on that.
It can happen in any.
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll literally do it until they get told to move on. They're not even gonna get tickets that they're in their car.
Not everybody is in their car all the time when they're living in their car. Yeah. I wanted wanted to circle back and ask a couple of questions. Counselor Fry, did you? No, she hasn't ever handed. Okay. Um, okay. I think that you had spoken a little bit earlier. That's why I'm taking a turn. But yeah, feel free to go right after. Okay, so I drove down a couple of times this weekend. And there were still some spots open. I didn't take pictures. But you know, where the spots were not, they were not at close to the Manette Bridge. They were further down towards 11th Street Place. And the parking spot that I used to park in all the time when I lived down there, those spots were open in front of that house. And that's way at the other end of the block. There was more parking down at that end than there was further on towards the bridge. I don't have any data. I'm not gonna say I don't believe it because because I think.
People would do that.
Um, I would because I used to live on that block. People do some crazy stuff. They they used to drive the wrong way down that block just to take a shortcut and they, anyway, it was ridiculous what people would do on that block. Around 11th Street Place, but we're, which is that little, anyway. And so if we could go, can we can we take a look back at the at the overhead view of the block?
Yeah, do you want this one kind of from last time or do you want the more of the fence?
I was kind of, the reason I, and I was pointing out.
Close to that light blue VW van on the right hand side?
Yeah, I can pull it up. Sorry. So that that's easier for overhead, but I can.
Yeah.
When you're working.
So very congested. The couple of times I drove through, very congested over, you know, we get closer towards the bridge opening. But very pretty clear around here. Pretty clear around here. So I think that maybe saying that this isn't an issue about parking in front of the house, I don't know that's not, I think it's a little disingenuous. I think that people do like to park in front of their houses. What I do want to honor and validate is there's really no way to make driveways. You can drive over, it's a steep incline.
And every driver would take away an on-speed parking spot.
Yeah, and and my question was about ADUs. I mean, what is, don't we?
You're required to have one off-street parking space for the first.
Right.
ADU.
Second ADU.
Two for the main. We changed it.
Shame on the city.
Two for the main house.
So.
See what my vote was on that one.
So that's why when we're talking about expansion and ADUs, that gets a little messy too. And so, and but I, what I really appreciate is the visual. Um, and so, uh, and, but I, what I really appreciate is the visual. Where of this, of what I like about this map is it shows the visual where they're restricted. You know, they don't have the same radius that the average, wow, I, I like.
Automatic loading there. I was asking for, but go back.
Yeah.
Oh, and there's a hole, yeah.
And so what I appreciated about that was, um, uh, that you can see that they don't have the big radius that other blocks do. Okay, so that's where mine's torn. Um, because they don't have their, their blocks, they don't, like they said, no alleyways like some places do. They don't have the ability to create driveways. They don't have, um, you know, they can't park in the water. Um, and then we already have a residential only on Highland, they can't, um, a- and I, and this, I mean, I lived here for many years in two different houses I lived. And so that's why I'm particularly, I mean. Qualified to talk about the parking here because I parked here for many years. I used to live over here and I lived over here in these two houses. And there was rarely a day where I could not find a parking spot. Of course, that was fifteen, twenty years ago, whatever it was. But again, when I drove down over the weekend, there were times a day, one time a night, one time a day, time. There was still free parking in this area here. Um, I didn't want to go to the trouble of taking pictures and be confrontational in, in that way because I, I appreciate what the. Community members are bringing in that, in the way that they're bringing their concern. Um, another thing is there is this parking lot here, this parking lot here is private, right? This is a private parking lot. This takes care of the residents in this apartment right over here.
That's my understanding, yeah, yeah.
And so several, that's one of the reasons why there's not as much clustered parking at this side of the block. Because this apartment building right here, that's their parking unit. I don't know about these houses here, I think it's private, I believe, but this is their parking lot. So that's what eases some of the. The parking woes of that area.
I believe they, they don't have, that, yeah, up here don't have parking permits, so.
Right, they, so they're the ones.
Not double divvied to about dollars, right, yeah.
And so I think just, a- and where, there is a group home down at the end of the block, which is. Well, over there, yeah.
Thanks.
And so that is where a lot of the parking is congested at, right? And so that's where, to your point, um, I, I really think it's people living there that don't have permits. I never got a permit for, I never got a parking permit when I lived there, even though I should, uh, should have, and it's a barrier. It's a barrier. I don't know how, I, I didn't know I needed to do it, I didn't know how to do it. I, I didn't know a lot of stuff back then. I was just trying to survive, but.
Yeah, she should tell us how many permits that that building, that house, that building has. That one, I don't know which house. Which do you want, uh, my house number slide?
Oh, I just don't want to get too nosey about it.
Oh, I'll just.
But it should say.
Is it this, this one here towards the, or sorry, this is the very beginning. That's, that's, that's. That's nine oh, nine oh two is, this one's nine oh two.
Right.
That's where they do have one, two, three, four, six currently.
And so that's where it's, the parking is clustered. So they probably have guests come through. I don't know, I don't have the data, what we.
I see Denise's hand up, but I can't see them.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you.
You know, uh, even larger context for us to keep in mind, I'm very supportive of this. Um, uh, I, I think, however. Uh, it's really ironic that we're looking at this and making sure that multiple people who live in the same house. That was built as a single family. Now, of course, we want multifamily and so we're able to maximize that. And, but it was never built with any parking. At the same time as we're considering getting rid of the parking minimums or, you know, establishing new norms. And the development of multifamily. So I just, I couldn't help but remark on that. And, and, uh, with, parking is go, is going to be huge because of the density that we're building in downtown. Uh, as projected with the comp plan. And I know that the planning commission is discussing that. So, uh, as far as parking minimums, bikes, all of that, so. Just something else, another wrinkle to put in this decision.
I joked last week, though, all right, here's a, here's the most controversial, parking.
Geez, it really is. But I'm glad that we have the other members of our parking. Finance investment here with us today, he and Michael both. Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute, Eric.
Okay, so I apologize.
You need to go.
Because you explained before, but how did we lose fifty parking spaces?
Yes, let me go back to, um. Something around eleven. So.
Street.
When they narrowed eleven to one, yeah, parking on the west of, of, of Washington.
So all the way on the other side, they were parking there?
Yeah, so there were fifty or some spots.
I never parked there.
Going along here.
Yeah, there were never all the way anybody in those.
And. Uh, they used to park at the right of the mall. Okay, so what the residents reported is that, yeah, when, when it's lower got, uh.
Yeah.
Too full, they could at least park here and then just walk across. Yes, there were definitely a lot of commuters, daytime folks and whatnot on the other side, but this is kind of like a relief valve forum, uh, is what they reported.
That was mine.
When this all, basically fifty plus, gone away and sixty percent lost to our quarter. That's why now they're really, really pinched in. So every, basically every car that's parking along here that doesn't actually live on the street. All the actual residents to go way down.
How it used to be when I lived there was it was not official parking and then, um, but people would park over there. It wasn't like designated off. But people would park there. I never parked there. But then they made it official parking lots at some point in time, parking spaces at some point in time in the past ten years. Um, then there were some on both sides of the street. So I don't know if that was ever meant to be permanent, but it, they became parking spots.
Okay, so maximums is forty-four parking spaces. With the city's policies, you could have many more units. I see two empty lots there. And, I mean, we're, this very city council, uh, it's upgraded and smashed. By not requiring, when you build an ADU, requiring a parking spot. And so I'm good with this, but then if it's a scenario where you have to have a special parking permit. Then I say, then you need to change it or zoning or whatever rule is for specific areas that require that. Then your ADU requires a parking spot, so we're not exasperating the problem. That's would be my solution. I'd be for that, but then we need to pass that so we're not creating a bigger issue. And it should be applied citywide. If not, I'm sorry, you people want these policies? Well, then you got to live with it this way. So, yeah, I can support this. Um, but again, put a, put a parking space for an ADU. Get rid of this nonsense. This is stupid.
Yeah, well, so. Sure, I.
Jeff needs to probably have a.
Sorry, we're in a spot as the president.
Yeah, I know.
But no, I think, uh, I think, I think all excellent points, you and Denise, this does, this does high and long term. Um, I would just say, in this particular situation, it's a case where the residents that have been living there for, you know, ten years now. Um, were used to a certain number of spots and because of the city project, those spots were taken away. Um, and that's kind of why this makes us a bit of a special case, but I think it's absolutely good things to think about. But yeah, if those were built, someone built that there, at least the people moving in would have no expectation of. You know, it should be well advertised that, hey, you want this, you want to move in this extra ADU, you want to move into this, better not. Expect to have a parking space on the street because the residential permits are.
No, but that, that becomes problematic because this is, maybe I'm stretching it, but this is similar to the New York medallion taxi, uh, licenses, wherever. Now, all of a sudden, having that permit for that unit makes your property more, uh.
Valuable.
Valuable than the newer ones that don't have those. We're creating winners and losers.
That's a really good point.
That's, that's really tough one to swallow. I think you got to fix this mess. Uh, but I'm, again, I'm okay with it, but we need to change our policy on not. I'm sorry, you can't cram them in there. If there's no parking, you can't cram a bunch of density in there. That, that won't give you relief for now because that's a bigger issue.
Um, Michael and then Anna.
So I kind of, kind of re-say something that I've already said, but, uh. So we switched the signs and we switched the stickers. Nothing changes. In park goes down the street at noon, there's no problem. They go home for the day. The residents come back at five, oh, five, or whatever we said, now there's no spaces. Like.
Well, I would like to speak to that a little bit. So a lot of, I was talking to someone earlier about this, that issue. People often think they don't, or they're not, but that's because often signage does not allow. Um, they actually, and I have JAS maps, they are out. Until, they aren't going to be there at nine at night, ten at night, they are out actually. They can be typically in the parks, um, or in, in locations where, um, you know, actually they usually do a lot of responses at that time of day. Um, so they are working later into the night. They do work on Saturdays and Sundays. So it's something, it would have to be something.
But I, and I know like complaint based, we can do that. We can certainly do it, uh, launch this change. But I really believe that the problem, it's like that, the old horror movie, the, the halls are in the house. I think that the problem cars there, well, whether they're in their car or sharing, you know, staying on someone's couch. I really believe that most of those cars are people who will just say, live in that area. They may not be on the lease, they may not own the property, but I just don't think they're going to park on Lower Washington or walk to the Minnet Saloon. Or park on Lower Washington and go to Evergreen Pizza or come to the Roxy or the, you know, they're, you know, it's a hyper, hyper local. And, you know, to this thing about losing all these spaces, again, I remember when eleven eastbound onto Washington was two lanes of traffic. So it was only a fairly short period of time that we had that such relief for that neighborhood. And, um, I, I don't, I just, I want to make sure that we, we were, were, you, you might have missed that. I was saying like. Yeah, I think that. I think that the culprits about this squeeze on parking are actually probably living, living in the car, on someone's couch, on the block. So, and so they're still going to need to go park somewhere else. And so now, now they can't get a, a pass for the two blocks, uh, the radius or, I mean, we could do, you know, or. We're not solving the problem. To be honest, we could have done this slam dunk, made some people happy. For a short period of time, but we didn't actually solve the problem.
Did you speak yet, Anna?
No.
Okay, Anna?
No, I was waiting for the vice president to gavel me in.
Um, that's right.
So I'm going to repeat that I really think we need more data and with this new data that you've just given us. Surely in park, um, could drive down the streets at nights and on weekends. When, when they're not, not asking for any overtime. Um, and, and document what the streets are doing. In park is objective. And if it turns out that there is problems, so be it. Second and final thing is, what a fantastic marketing opportunity for a smart car or a, like. The commercials you could get. I used to have a problem with my congested street, but now with my smart car, no problem. Pollution through the street.
Um.
Unless any other questions or comments.
Okay, so my question is. I know that they go out on the weekends, I went and took them, yeah. Um, so, I mean, there's still enforcement that happens. I mean, would it be a benefit to increase funding for a contract in part?
I would recommend not for this particular item. I would say if we wanted to get a variety of.
Right.
Enforcement actions we'd like to change, but not this one, this one item. Um, what the residents have available to them right now, they, they just change that sign to one hour. Monday through Sunday, twenty-four, seven, and we would, uh, only issue a maximum of eighty-five percent. They're available parking stalls and that's all we would do. So right now, today, there's no, um, you know, that's what's available to the bylaw. Um, you know, that might give them thirty permits on the street. We don't know if it's applied for that. It would be just for some preserve. Uh, um, and then, you know, see where that gets them, what does that get them to a place where they're happier, um. Um, you know. That's, that's something that could happen right now and essentially everybody would say that too would be. In. There's off-street parking, there are best lanes, you know, those stuff here and. To anyone that, where we have to take out, you know.
You do, you do, of course, give priority to disabled people, right? Because I saw a couple of disabled signs on the street. Sorry, to break protocol, just thought this.
Um, we do not have a prioritization as far as residential parking permits, uh, but we do have. A, a program that if you live on that street and you request an AD install, there's an install for you and you don't have to have a permit at all for that. You just have a.
Okay.
Sorry, just checking. Okay, thank you.
Um, before Eric goes, Jeff, do you want to add some words?
No, I'll, I'll.
Okay, Eric.
Uh, I'm good. True, I like that idea. Why can't you just go two-hour parking all days? Like you just said, instead of one hour, just two. So if you have someone visiting or whatever, that's fine. Then I guess you, well, they already have a target. So you do what you said and that, that's a much simpler change. And it could, if it don't work, then we can come back to the trial or see what, what works. Seems reasonable to me.
And I think I can speak for the residents of any, any change is better than what you have now. Uh, I think what, you know, I've seen loud and clear, they are repeatedly, they've been coming to us, they've been repeatedly telling us. I don't think they're, they're making it up that they can't get parking anywhere near their house. I don't think they're being hyperbolic about it. Um, in that we're hearing, you know, going to permit only is the simplest solution, easier to enforce. Even the two-hour, the one-hour, you still have in park coming to come out multiple times to tag a car that it's there. And then tag again that it's there, you know, those two hours later. Um. And then. As far as data goes, I, you know, I want to, I want to make clear, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go door to door down there or anything and say like, oh, send info to the city council, right? Like, I'm sure, that's, that's loud and clear, but.
Reports and every report.
You know, but, but they, I'm sure they would be happy to keep sending pictures, um, send them in, right, so.
The record is four hundred.
The Washington bike lane photographer, I think, is in free time now.
They're nearby. They are adjacent. Hopefully they can.
Just to, just to expect that, no.
They'll probably walk, won't need a parking spot at all. I, I've been driving, I have been driving by there at night lately to check on this, so.
Yeah, and then I, I feel like I'm hearing, I gotta really praise the discussion, but maybe a little circular logic on. About pushing the problem down somewhere else. Because essentially, we, we know there's a certain number of spots in the street. We know that a certain number of residents want to park their cars. About the same number right now, right? Right, so it's not, it's not like we have twelve cars and fifty spots, right? We know there's about forty, forty some odd spots, forty some odd cars that need to be parked that live, that belong to people on that street. And so codifying it of, yes, yes, this is, this is the street you can park on, the only street you can park on. Um, just sets things right and so that. I, I don't see a pushing problem anywhere. It's, it's just that we're making it so somebody who lives a block or two in the other direction would have a lot more options to park. If you're over here on Pleasant and Pleasant and Eleventh or Highland and Eleventh, you have a lot more options than yours, several lock radius to go park. We're making sure that those folks are staying over there, that aren't. Or Washington, so. Thank you. Denise's hand went up.
Uh, let's go to Denise.
Yeah, uh, I really appreciate the, the work that, uh, uh, everybody put in, but especially Melinda. I think it's really important to have that perspective. You work with in park, you know, you get the calls. Uh, you know, I really appreciate your perspective and that's one of the reasons I'm supportive of this. Um, I do need to keep putting up the warning flag though, much as Eric has with. Um, this has a lot of. Um, this has a lot of extenuating circumstances, which is why I think it's a good fit. Um, and we've said them all. Uh, I, I think the challenge is believing that everybody that lives somewhere gets to have a parking space. And I think people are challenging that norm. And, uh, I, I understand that all of this kind of grew and it became multifamily and I think it's wonderful. But we're, we're rubbing into that, it, it's a different culture and we're thinking, oh, maybe if, if it's multifamily or it's, uh, 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 you know, maybe they'll ride bikes. Maybe they won't need a parking space. And so this conversation I think is really important. Uh, for our planning commission to pay attention to because, um, it's considering this. You know, uh, really as we speak, so, um, this little, this is a huge conversation we're having about a little strip of, of road. And I think it is just the first of many conversations about the challenges of building density in an urban environment.
Um, so let me just take a temperature here. Okay, because I, I want to figure out if where we're at. We've talked about having different signage as an alternative to voting on this proposal. I want to find out if y'all even want to take this for, for action. I don't, I don't know that I'm, I don't know that I'm feeling like there's enough of us that want to take this for action. I think we got a couple of supporters outward. Can we even do a straw poll? You know, like.
I'm really happy to just take this to general business. We'll vote on it and we'll do the next step.
God, I just don't want to do that to the community. If you really want to.
It's just, it's kind of hard to bring it back if we brought it down in general.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying.
I feel like we're gonna get, I feel like we're gonna get to an answer for.
I would, I would love to.
Almost fifty minutes on.
Could we take a straw poll? I mean, we've done that before. We did that with the pledge and the flag.
Are we open to do a straw poll? Um, voting for, if we want to take it for action to council. Yeah, I mean, if, if you, okay, I mean, if you have three people that want to take it for action, that's kind of the unspoken rule.
Oh, that's the only thing we can vote on. We're not saying what we would vote, what we'd be supportive of now. We, we'd want to wait until everything.
Majority.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, here's the deal. I, 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 I like the solution of new signage isn't, you know, what do y'all think about? New signage?
Support that completely.
I feel like that's an alternative that we can, that we could present to folks. I, I just feel like if we take it for action, we vote it down, we can't, they can't bring it back up as easily next, if there's another issue. Go ahead, go ahead, Anna, say your piece. It's okay.
That's how democracy works. Somebody loses.
Come on, there's softer, easier ways to do things besides winners and losers.
I don't want it to be just.
Idea doesn't work, then, then I may be support, more supportive of it. That's why I suggest we try the administration, try a new fix and see if it works.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with the new signage. Because we have the new information that in parks actually there evenings and weekends.
I don't know, that, that wasn't new for me, by the way, with my ticket I got. A, a long time ago, but go ahead, Michael. Okay, so, um, I think what we need to do is explore signage for this block. A signage alternative and, and Eric's point was two hours Monday through Sunday.
I mean, really a different, different set of regulations within what we have available.
Training framework.
Yeah.
So we need to have a new policy for parking?
No, 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 this is, this is administration. It just changes the.
Yeah, it's a, and then a horrible authority there. So we just, this was there. We have a procedure for it. We actually have sent them that petition so they can, um, you know, understand, you know. They all vote on it. Two thirds of the properties have to agree to that. If they agree, then change the signage. Um, we can also just decide to do it, um, you know, uh, with notice to them and they can still appeal it, our decision. Um, but that's what's available to the current end of the code. We have a petition process for that.
Okay.
So can we revisit, okay, can we revisit this? What were you gonna say, Michael?
Oh, it's basically, so we've already got car permits on them. We changed the language on the signs to, to support the neighbors who live there. See what happens.
Come back in. It's a good next step. I was feeling a little uncomfortable because I didn't want it just to be kind of, okay, well, we'll do this much, you know, um. But I think it's a good first step, especially when the, within the larger context of parking. Period.
So I would like to revisit this, um, and it seems appropriate to put it under general council business instead of agenda briefings for now. But I'd like to revisit the signage for Lower Washington Avenue, the first study session in December. Is that, that's two months from now?
That sounds like, you know, we'll have the signage, yeah.
Will we sign it? Will we have data?
Take any action?
I'm saying, I'm asking us to revisit and, and find out where the city is, has gone with it.
Well, I can kind of brief, you know, what I hear from residents. Um, if this is able to get implemented, I can brief what I hear from residents on an ongoing, you know, basis. Um, if we hear feedback and then.
No need to put it on as a general council business? Okay.
I'll, I'll say my piece because I have to say to my constituents, you know, I think we have a solution, we're an administration on a solution. What the residents are asking for. I got, that would be my top priority, but if we can't get there, um, the majority of council, I do.
Honestly, just don't see how it's any different because you've got X amount of people with permits on them.
Fair, fair enough. There's agreement.
It's okay. You've already said you have your piece. I, we've heard, it's okay. So we have a path forward. And, oh yeah, Kylie or, or mayor.
I mean. Have a resolution that this is what the council or the administration is due. Um, so that it clears that this was initiated by council and that the council has gave administration.
Well, yeah, so this, it's the, it's going to residential permit only that requires council action.
Right, it's not that part of.
I know what you're saying.
Under the code is the part about council coming forward and then asking the administration to take action.
I guess what I would see at this point is saying, coun- council as a whole is not comfortable, you know, passing what councils require. The resident, the administration.
What's happening is we have a different solution than you have. So.
They go to the mayor's office first and did you get to us? So we're basically just saying, this isn't a council level action, take it to administration.
Yeah.
I don't see why that requires a resolution. We get, we get emails all the time and then we'll CC the, you know, staff, we'll CC the mayor because this is within the mayor's purview. You've got residents that have a parking issue that we don't think that we need to write a law to change. You know, so.
Are you proposing that this last hour is something that I can take under advice? Because that's what it is now.
Sure, if you don't want to do it, don't do it. Yeah.
Yeah, uh-oh. We know, we know you'll have some people who we have said.
So then if it comes back and says, administration said they wouldn't, well, then that's, change the sign.
Wouldn't make this administrative change.
So we, we have one proposal. That's Jeff's. Rest of this is just discussion that nobody knows unless they pull out a tape and listen to it. So we're saying right now because the council's saying no to Jeff's, we're gonna take it to administration. I'll take what I heard under advisement.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm good with that. Great. Yeah. Okay.
And I can encourage the, I can sum this up for the residents and encourage them to write mayor's office, um.
In a body. So then I still feel like maybe we need to have an official time to revisit this. Issue?
The mayor will take care of it. The mayor will take care of it. That is.
Right.
It's an administrative change.
Parking committee, can you please say a rest of the issue?
Sure.
Okay. Alrighty. Okay, and, um, uh, the, the complicated part is we don't have a breach of forum, so the best way to bring it up is of course that, go to the order. Uh, you already know this, you're a rule follower. Um, okay, so I think we'll move on. And we'll just kind of, this, this is not dead. This is not a dead request. Clearly.
You could go with Jeff's resolution or tweak that a little bit or, um, for law.
Well, we'll take that under advisement.
Oh, cheers to the season.
Linda knows all the options here.
Get anybody some.
And she can come up with the best thing because she's been involved with us the whole time. So that's like, rather than us now try to vet every single possible overlay that Melinda could do in that area.
Feel like she's.
I think this is her recommendation, isn't it?
This is base recommendations. Yeah, well, okay, guys, let's not stay from Melinda. She's sitting right here at the table, y'all. So she just had an alternative for it.
We, we can sit down, just like we do, like I did today. Touring all of downtown, looking at parking challenge, listening to proposals and and we have scant space available for the demand that's out there. We've got commuters, we've got many residents downtown. We, you know, so what happens if we increase enforcement here or more restrictions? Well, where do they go? All those things we take into consideration of the entire system. And that's, that's ongoing.
Okay, I, I, I'm, I'm smelling what you're cooking. Um.
I'll just close it. Thank you all so much for thoughtful due diligence and digging into this and I do, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your commitments to your constituents. Um, let's move on to general council business. These are approximately five minutes each, which five minutes in council time is like dog years or the reverse of dog years. I don't know. Um, so we have some questions. I, I had some questions. I wanted to know if y'all, how we wanted to spend our little bit of surplus funds we have. If we wanted to do something fun with it or if we wanted to return it back to the general fund or, I don't know, go have a giant pizza party and, um, you guys tell me if there's anything you'd like to do. Huh? On a, on a new boat, but we gotta wait till twenty twenty six. Um, to be on the cool ones. The peas don't get cold. But really, I mean, we've done some fun stuff. We have, we did spend, um, a little bit of our, um, restroom allocation, uh, on reimbursing G two, G two. Um, we have some remaining in that category. The three main items we have, surplus funding is our travel and training. But there haven't been as much of us going to A W C. Um, and so on. And then we have, uh, this is the rest of our restroom allocation for this um, year.
Which page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, I, I, you know what, it's, is it? It's actually just, I apologize. Is it not on the agenda? It's not in the packet at all.
It's kind of, it's, there's, there's a bunch of documents.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
It's up, Juneteenth is there.
So what we have left, I, I'm sorry, uh, is seven, eight, nine. I mean, we have like eleven K. And, you know, I mean, if there's something you want to dedicate, I thought it would, might, might be nice to dedicate it to vulnerable populations if you want to do something for them. Denise.
I really, uh, I really get this and I, I really, uh, I enjoy it too when I'm ending the year, looking to the end of the year and realizing I'm gonna have a surplus. Um, because that's what we call it, you know, it's, you're operating on a budget and you've spent less than you, you've budgeted. And that's, that's a really good thing. And so I think it is a good conversation to have. I tend to believe in the original plans for the money. Um, and try to stay that, to as close to that as possible. And if not, uh, then if I was running an organization, I would put the excess in the, uh, carryover and decide how to spend it. But that's, that's just me. It's also a relatively small amount of money. Um, it's kind of like LTAC, which is why it frustrates me, I suppose.
And just for context, and, and Eric, I'm gonna call on you next, but you'll appreciate this. For context, we always get to budget season and we always argue for some small ten thousand dollar amount. And then we waste our time of budget season trying to figure out how to take care of one niche project that we like and love. But let's just do it now. If it's gonna be a small expenditure, is all I'm kind of trying to put forward.
Or we could not do it at all, but that's just me.
Uh, so.
Can we carry over?
Carry over.
There's a rebudget.
It's a general fund. It just goes over the, the beginning fund balance, whatever.
It just goes back.
It just goes back to the general fund and.
Okay, so we can't carry over.
Look, if you got a thing when we have thoughtful discussion, uh, you can't make a decision tonight on, you know, an extra one thousand dollars for. Talk about in budget and then I say you don't spend it. I agree with Denise. You're not, you're not unique in this aspect. I, of course not. I, I faces with my own organization. I have in money. I'm not one of those types that rush to spend it. Let's spend out, no, 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 no. Give it back. So if I didn't have plans for it, uh, and I got a surplus, like this taxpayer money, it goes back and we'll find a better use for it later. Um, just giving. Yeah, no, if we're not using it towards intended purposes of travel, training or professional services, give it back. That's what it was intended for.
Um. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. We, we set our budget every year. Um, and I think that's the time to really dedicate that money unless we're on some mid-year budget adjustment, but we, we, you know, we're past that. Um, so I just say talk about this as budget season and kind of rely on council president to disperse those funds and, and if we don't get to, you know, people didn't use up their travel this year, we should stop, well, budget season next year. And you need to say, oh, maybe we don't budget as much for travel if people really aren't using it, or we say that was a, that was a down year. Um, we always do want to, we always do want to make sure we budget so that every council member can do conference or training. Uh, and get that valuable experience. And hey, if we don't use it up, it goes back to the general fund, it goes back to the city. Um, but it's there if we do need it because.
I'm just going to say, let's look at this, A, when we have full council here. And B, when we're in budget season and if some genius idea occurs between now and budget season. Then we have a, like, something that we really, that's really in our.
Rear staff if they need anything.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's eight o'clock at night and I, I am losing energy rapidly.
Ah, okay, it's not even eight o'clock. The sun is setting early. And to, to be fair, there's things you brought up at about nine thirty, nine o'clock. This is something pretty simple. And what I'm really saying is, is there any more travel or training that y'all want to do before the end of the year? Let me know. Let's do it publicly. Also, there's still six thousand seven hundred fifty-two remaining in the restroom allocation. Um, we don't know yet if there's gonna be, uh, any plans with us. We, we kind of took care of that like late in the year.
Didn't think, do we have our original council budget this year? Look at.
No, I don't have that, but you can make an appointment with staff to look at it, I think, so. Yeah, that's, that's something that you have to make an appointment with Lori to look at, I guess, so, for the full, it's like with any department head.
If you could put this in, in the packet so that we would have.
It would have been in the packet. I'm sorry that it wasn't in the packet. I did ask for it to be.
I didn't know.
So, um, as, uh, information. Well, is it not? Um.
And then, then we would have had, like, maybe some thoughts.
I brought information to you a couple of weeks ago with similar numbers, so, um, it's not a surprise that there's extra money. Let's just leave it like it is. If y'all need training, uh, just please let me know about training. Um, and so I guess the consensus is to return the six thousand seven hundred fifty-two back to the general fund?
Unless something comes up at the end of the year.
We got till December thirty first.
Okay, all right, okay. So we're just gonna keep it as it is. Um, all right, next up, uh, Councilor Coughlin, I provide a brief summary for A W C social media webinar from September eighteen.
Yeah, I didn't know I got my own, uh, agenda item.
I didn't either. I, I mean, that's kind of special, so it better be good. You got five minutes to make a shine.
Uh, the long, long story short, that day was crazy and I couldn't make it, but they provide recordings and so, um, I've asked for reporting. They said it could be. um, I've asked for reporting. They said it's morning, but if you can, so.
That was.
I did, I didn't report back.
Oh, my God. Thank you for making it less than five minutes. And in Jane's absence, can you please provide also Vice Chair Coughlin a brief summary of the last Public Works Committee meeting?
Yeah, I will have to, if you want to punch, I'll pull up.
Do you want to, Anna, do you want to go ahead and do your, you've got a couple of items here, Audit Committee, and then um, a summary of.
They did public works for you. They're working on pipes, they're pouring.
Bill Davis. Something about an outflow.
We were talking about parklets.
And about all the chip seal.
We decided parklets were gonna be Parks Department. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we did not decide.
Anna, okay. Bang, bang, bang. Anna.
Audit Committee.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Most really simple, uh, we removed the project written policy compilation from the audit work plan because we are going to discuss that as whole council um, at some future point, um, when it gets on the agenda. The, basically what we did is in plain language is we decided to do a cost benefit analysis, not just on using in park versus doing it in-house, but also on getting a communications manager versus the various consultants that we have been using. So those are the two, yes, yes, next projects that are coming up in audit and I personally am quite, quite thrilled about. Yeah, that was the Audit Committee.
All right. Anything yet on Public Works?
Oh, got it.
Anna, will you please provide a brief summary of the A W C Municipal Budget 101 webinar?
Um, I didn't know that I was going to do this until I came in and saw.
I, 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 I know. Okay, I guess if I, I guess if I'm paying for your training, I'm getting to call you on the spot.
You totally do, but I hung up at my slides with me. I took screenshots of a number of things. I'm gonna give you a one sentence thing that knocked me out was their whole plan was that the community talks to the council and they come up with goals that staff refers back to throughout the budget plan, which begins in January. And discussions occurred throughout. Um, and it's, you find measurable ways to make sure that the work plan reflects the goals of the community that they have discussed with council. And that's my one sentence wrap. More, more to come.
Thank you. Um.
Would you like to talk about parking, Michael?
Finance investment and parking committee, Michael, good now. Can you please provide a summary of the meeting that was held um, yesterday?
He's Noah Rappam. Whose name was the plain white rapper, one that wasn't already used. Uh, not because you're funny. Um, because you're white. I don't know. I feel like that just went into a hole. Uh, Finance Investment Parking Committee Meeting met. Uh, we talked about a, thank you.
Taking a whole.
Uh, stormwater grant application, uh, that's being applied for, uh, structure, um, uh, no, but no. Riley, thank you. Uh, would, just gave us a little bit of an update on ARPA funds and how some of those funds are kind of in hold for shelter. And you talked to the, that group.
Yes.
Okay, about it.
Requirement I mentioned it about.
Yeah, so anyways, um, and, um, then we had a little bit of more of a discussion about the, um, income levels for the multifamily tax exemption. Don't really have anything to report on that. Don't really have anything really updated on a bunch of this, so.
Okay.
At this hour, I see the rest of my time.
Okay.
Am I, am I?
Yes, I, no, I don't.
I would.
I do not mind.
Hold the show on. Um, I've talked about, so just that, yeah, by the issue. Funds that are funded for the shelter are not obligated right now. Those funds have to be obligated by the end of the year, so thirty-one twenty-four. And there has to be something underlying how those funds do.
Oh, God.
That a partner, partner have something for them to type in, a site selection, something designed under something. Or closer, you have to give us that tipping point guy, give us a nod like we're getting closer. But council has to keep in mind, we don't want those funds go back to the treasury.
Right.
If we get to that point, the council will have to give it, find a way to provide that money if we can build it, we're in relationship. That's a very cool.
Yeah.
Conversation. You have to put it out there to the council to wear, put it out there.
Yeah, so this is what I briefed a couple of weeks ago during study session. Yeah, just, it shouldn't, shouldn't be a surprise, but appreciate finance discussing the.
This is a surprise. No, wait, this is, it's not a surprise, but it's new deep information that we don't have anything to tie these funds to. And we're at in October, November, December.
We can find stuff to tie that to. The real issue is can we get this, can we get this shelter thing?
Well, we have the ability to be pretty flexible to tie to something else, but you have a shelter project that we're tied to. We need to be able to help get to that problem. And that, yeah, it's in jeopardy. Right now, we have nothing to oblige.
Yes, the task force is aware of this requirement and, and has a plan, yeah.
Thank you. I'm not happy with that. I'm not happy that it's October. We don't even have a site selection, but, okay. Cool, 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 cool. All right, uh, Public Works Vice Chair, Jeff Coughlin.
Back to Public Works, um. Yeah, let's see, what, uh, got an update on the comprehensive plan, transportation element update. Um, just, just a briefing on progress, uh, and Denise jumping here on anything if I, if I take a lot. Um, got a nice briefing on the feasibility of hydropower, um, either at the dam or, um, anywhere downstream. Uh, and I think the long and short of it is it's just not economically feasible. There's no system that, that would really, um, generate any substantial net revenue and not have negative impacts, uh, to our water system, but it was a, it was a thorough, thorough expla- thorough exploration of the possibilities there. Uh, we've got right away on Naval Avenue, that's, that's progressing, but that project's a couple of years out, um, to construction. So that right away acquisition for Naval Avenue is gonna take, uh, take about two years. I'm also, you know, Tom jumping, anything I get wrong as well. Um, streetery update, originally we're hoping for streetery policy in place, you know, by the end of this year, early next, so the business has had a plan. Um, sounds like the city will extend the current permits and that's not gonna be ready until next year sometime. If I parsed it correctly, administration is proposing to, to fund it over to Parks Department to manage city-owned parklets. I personally, that's a pivot I don't really support, uh, compared to other cities. We looked at that. We can continue to issue permits and, and have requirements for streeteries, but it sounds like that's a conversation we need to get more detail on. Um, not at this hour, but I want to talk more on that personally. Uh, we got a nice update on five-year paving plan, great, really great maps in my opinion, of color-coded of year by year, where five paving expected to happen. Um, but the five-year sidewalk plan, um, is not gonna be complete again. So that is still, um, down the road. And then, um, uh, we touched base on Warren Bridge, um, Stafford continued to work, but were washed out, um, on that project and um, the only possible reason forever needing to revisit the width that we were told is if Wash Dock came back with a much different weight, uh, requirement than we had already gotten from our uh, previous, uh, from subcontractors. And then Sixth Street, I think there's a nice presentation on that the other night, folks can go watch. And then, uh, we kind of touched on eleven on Washington Roundabout and some of the remaining issues there, um, folks work on. And then utility land, man, land management plan, we just faced on tonight.
What about, hey, can I start the notion about the, the existing streeteries? Are they paying for each renewed permit?
My understanding.
Yeah, they're.
Okay.
Pretty much, um, had no policy.
Well.
Um.
Like a dumpster fee?
That's it. Uh, there's, no, there's a, um, tax. Oh, yeah. People, at least, yeah, at least.
Okay, it's like.
Pretty normal.
During COVID, I got a right of way to do outdoor seating at the Roxy. And when it expired, I've had to pay every like six months, few hundred dollars to renew it. They'll, they'll, they'll extend it one time and then, then you're gonna pay again.
Well, we're status quo, um, we're gonna.
Somehow I fell out of the status quo, I guess.
I, I, I don't know.
Because I didn't build something out of.
Yeah.
Talents, yeah, okay.
We're, we're maintaining status quo, it's not extending for a year. Um, and hopefully we'll have something in place by spring and like, uh, Council Captain mentioned, we're looking at a certain one park, so we've got uniform design. Are there some other advantages to that?
Yeah, this ties into Public Works. I'm looking at this bottle of personal water. We don't know what makes personal water, I think. For years, I brought up the idea, we have the best water in Birmingham, in the state, perhaps in the country. Why can't it say Birmingham Water? I'm, I'm serious. We get the best water. Why can't we have an enterprise? Doesn't even have to be run by city employees.
Is this a go-to-the-order idea?
Sure it is.
I thought people would come and stay in a hotel just to visit and drink that water.
That ties into that too. I'm serious. This is one, and I don't want to hear, oh, you know, that's whatever. We talked about other, we have a golf course.
It's a really good idea and people in Manhattan and Brooklyn have, many years ago, they just took New York City to a forum. It's just great. And put it into bottles and sold it for a buck.
This one's purified water and all filtered water. We don't even have to filter ours. We, we, you talk about building the brand, Denise.
It's all about the water. I want to, I want to.
You have a beer that's advertised and this guy put waters out in Minnesota. We get, we've got a water company.
You can log in. Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. Eric, Eric.
I'm, I'm some of this, I'm in chief, but I've been serious about this for years.
Eric, keep your weight up. You have, are, I'm gonna gavel you down here. I just want to commend you for your progressive revenue stream ideas. Um, and, but go back to the script, which is.
Well, you think I've ever been on a script before?
Oh, well, we're way off tonight. Um, okay, so is there any council member who has a regional or other committee board they'd like to care about?
I was gonna ask, well.
Yeah.
Get that nine-one-one. I'm not on it. Um, I did want to put an idea and I can talk to the members to get that nine-one-one in more detail, but there's something called Smart nine-one-one that other jurisdictions haven't acted. And I, I don't know if it's come up at all in discussion this year, last year. Okay.
I go, you heard it?
Okay, I'll send, I'll send information, but I met with a, um, somebody who lives in Port Orchard currently, but they used to live in Birmingham. They travel here. They have a medical condition. It allows you to upload your personal medicine, medications to nine-one-one. So, and so this person's life was literally saved because they were in King County. Um, they had updated their medical information and that saved their life, having nine-one-one.
That's about not anything we implement right now. I'm just looking back at my E, my E M P books back there. No, okay. Wouldn't that be helpful? Wouldn't that be great? You just like, all their medical records are there, but. Right, but if they're, well, they're electing to upload it into the.
Yeah, it's a voluntary program. King and, King and Skokomish, uh, those two counties both have it.
It would be about serious medical conditions, not, you know, something that, that E M Ts would be, they're not, you know, hanging out.
I'll, I'll, more on more in short, uh, the board, I just want to put that out there. Somebody could really go get that.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Um.
Yes.
Any, any other regional committee now? Or you, you're going to go to the order, aren't you? Anna, go to the order.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um. Couple of things. One is, uh, we all reached consensus that, um, the policies of the city should be made public. So we now have them. We have a main city development to public. But I would like to do two things. One is to just triple check that, yes, you want to put on the council website, like here's our procurement policy, here's our speed house policy. All of that. Has everybody had a chance to review it? I sent it out a couple of weeks ago. Okay, so can we come back to this in two weeks and everyone will bow to like look it over a little bit?
So this is a different request than was made at the, uh, at the previous study session that you're referencing. Um, so this was in reference to something that came out of the Audit Committee was what was brought forward.
The ready policy compilation, to have all of the policies that the city has in one place. And this council also wanted them to be available to the public. That was the unanimous consensus. But now I just want to make sure that everybody's had a chance to look at them before they, you know.
And not looking at all our problems.
No, and I don't know that we were under a unanimous consensus that all, that everything, I don't know that, that we had the unanimous consensus for what you're referring to. Jeff, go ahead.
Um, um, so I think, if I parse right, we have a link that is pumped that if someone from the public clicks on it, they can view all the city's policies, all public records.
Yes.
And the request is to make that link more visible. And if it's.
Put it on the council website, yeah.
Great to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the entire request. That's part one of the entire request.
It's not the entire request, it's the thing.
No, that's, that's the main thing.
Okay.
It'd be better though, for people to get that link on the, maybe on a page that has more information of that stuff. Do you mean like, if people are going to the website and they're looking for policies, is there not an easy place to?
No.
Then, then maybe that's a better solution is to create a really clear thing that says city policies, then it, it gives it some context instead of just a link to adopt.
I mean, I don't want necessarily people to have to find a city council website to find the policies. Like, why would we be the arbiters of that?
Well, can, can Kelsey just put it on the main website? Kelsey Don.
I don't think we direct administration to do that.
I'm just saying, is it something that is within?
I'm sorry.
Actually, we have a resolution.
I will take that under advisement.
So to your point then, it would be just to ensure that the public has access to it. You'd want it on the city council website, but what, to, to Michael's point, if it were on a different place on the website, um, if, if administration were open to our advisement.
I mean, just go back to this idea that we need somebody probably to really help with communications.
Communications manager, for example.
Oh.
Director.
Our manager.
Don't start. Um, the only reason that I suggest the council website is A, we're supposed to craft policy and B, um, we can ask someone to put it on our website, whereas we can't, like, we can ask the administration to put it out there.
I mean, I guess here's where I'm, I'm struggling with it is that, are we, we're talking about the internal policies of the administration, how they have interpreted our laws. So I'm not sure if it actually does fit on the city council website.
I know, so hey, I feel like we have three city council pages. I have to click on all seven of them just to align that agenda every week.
Yeah, I can't, it's, it's a son of a gun. It would be nice to get that as a link, but, um, so is there a way to?
Get it.
You know, that, that issue finding the agenda. I always go to the, like, I go to like the council and it's got this thing and it's like the schedule, but it's not the agendas. You have to click on some other links.
It's like it says archives. You check in, you check in to the meeting archives to find the current agenda and that.
You can just bookmark the council meeting.
Now I just go to Muni.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
I don't have a problem with it being on our page, but I just, again, isn't the right solution. I, I.
Okay.
But I can't tell you right where.
How many more things are we gonna put on our site?
Um, Director Riley is.
Yeah, dir- director.
If I question, so we just, like, uh, healthy. Are we talking all city policies, like, fuel policies, alcohol policies, like, how are we talking public works policies, public?
I think it's everything that's already available online. There was a link from our.
Yeah, no, not.
Page to, to the.
Now we're gonna, just like, we have.
Whatever that link.
Right, there will be no paint upholstery, that whole policy. Yeah, that one's, yeah, that will not public now. Okay, the other thing is, um, part two, I'm timing myself, is I think there are policies we might want to consider discussing, like, how, how, a way that we could, for example, come to consensus and offer guidance to Public Works on where to put sidewalks. Like, I, for example, would really like them to be near schools. The only public works policy that I know of is to, to fill gaps, you know, where there's a gap in sidewalk to fill it. Um, find, find a gap and fill it. So, uh, a data policy on, for example, having all the outreach be consistent and to yield data. Just a few things. I will send this email out to all of you, so it'll go to the top of your box.
I, I think it is sent, it, it's sent. I, I think it is sent, it, it's sent, it's copied. Uh, with my reply to asking me to bring it up, a good of the order, what you were.
Other piece of good of the order is I've gone to some, I've toured some homelessness solutions in Pierce County, the common streets and some encampments here. So if at any time in the future you'd like to hear about that, I have five slides, non showing any human beings. Um, just something I thought, if at some future point you guys would like to hear it, I would love to tell you about it. That's it, all done.
Okay.
Regional meeting to me.
Great job. Look at you with your timeliness on.
I worked hard on that one.
Okay, so, um, I, I need to circle back though, because, uh, have we, are we in agreement that the link to, what is it specifically? Is it, uh, that we're asking to be linked onto the city council?
A S P X.
A S P X link?
Yeah, uh, bermertonwad dot sharepoint dot com backslash sitepages backslash policies dot.
Eric, I just really wanna call on you because you're just thinking about something. I'm like staring at you and watching like he's pondering.
No, I'm waiting for you to hand this.
Okay. And it's maybe as adjourned. I think we are done now. Are we done? Are we, any other good of the order? All right. Um. I've already done what, uh, this next item says I should do, so. And the next council meeting will be on Wednesday, October second, starting at five-thirty in the first floor meeting chambers of the Norm Dicks. Wait a minute, before we do this, I am so sorry. Anna, you asked several things. I just wanna make sure that I'm clear. You wanted them to read the email. We're not actually making any decisions on a sidewalk policy at this meeting. You just wanted to read the email. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next council meeting, Wednesday, October second, starting at five-thirty in the first floor meeting chambers of the Norm Dicks Government Center. Public invited to attend in person or remotely, but anyone wishing to speak during public recognition via Zoom must submit their request to the city clerk by calling three six zero four seven three five three two three at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. This meeting is.